All right, this is the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, January twenty second, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Mark, you want to read our notice of meeting?
Sure. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven, chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, January twenty second, twenty twenty five at the time indicated. Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel Eight or High Definition Channel ten seventy two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website. H T T P colon forward slash forward slash streaming eighty five dot Town of Barnstable dot U S. Forward slash cable cast public site. Forward slash watch forward slash one question mark channel equals one. And also on real time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number. And meeting ID provided below. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided here. Uh, the Zoom meeting link is H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash Town of Barnstable. Hyphen U S dot Zoom dot U S forward slash J forward slash number eight three two nine eight 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 seven seven five four. Can also call in that um to the toll free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Again, that meeting ID is eight three two nine eight 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 seven seven five four. Applicants that they're respect representatives and individuals. Required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely. It may participate through accessing the link or the telephone number provided above and by myself. Document or exhibits and or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at Town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. So that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling five zero eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing Anna dot Brigham at Town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. Mic's muted.
Thank you, Mark, for reading that. I appreciate you taking that one. Um, so I'll call the meeting to order with introduction of board members. Uh, Herb Bohnsie.
Present.
Paul Pennard. Mark Hanson.
I'm present.
Aaron Webb. Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Benny Alves.
Present.
Rodney Tavano was gonna be absent tonight. Uh, Natalie Pittinger.
Present.
All right. Awesome. Notice of and I'm Jacob Dewey. Notice the recording. The meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel accordance with M G L Chapter thirty eight, section twenty. I must inquire whether anyone's recording this meeting and if so, please make their presence known. Doesn't look like anyone's recording. Uh, we don't have any minutes tonight and we don't have any old business. We only have new business. Uh, Appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero four eight. Group One Realty Inc. has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash twenty five C auto service and repair. Two forty ninety three B alteration of a preexist of preexisting nonconforming structure and two forty dash ninety four B. Expansion of preexisting nonconforming use in the G P district. And it is seeking to modify special permit number two thousand nine dash zero seven zero to reflect proposed changes. The applicant proposes demolition and reconstruction of the front portion of the service center. A new two-story addition to the rear of the building, demolition removal of the former car rental office. And interior renovations that result in one additional service bay. The subject property is located at ten forty and ten fifty six I N O Road. Hyannis, Massachusetts has shown assessors map two nine four as parcels zero zero two and zero seven two respectively. It is located in the Highway Business H B and the Business Zoning District. Um, so sitting on this would be our regular members, myself, Herb, Paul, Mark and Aaron. Attorney Cox, over to you.
Great. Uh, good evening, uh, members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I am an attorney at Nutter McLennan and Fish. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I do have um a brief PowerPoint that I was hoping to present, so I'm gonna try and share my screen. And let me just get it started. Sorry. All right. Can everyone see my screen? Okay? Great. Uh, so there's various members of our project team that are here this evening who I wanted to introduce. You will hear from some of them during our presentation. And then uh, the others are here certainly if you have any questions of them. So from Group One Automotive, Brad Johnson is on the Zoom as is Dennis Lopes. Dennis is also the general manager of this uh, location. Uh, Matthew Eddy from Baxter and I Engineering, who's the civil engineer for the project, uh, is on the Zoom. And then from the architectural team, Bryce Johnson and Cord McLean from uh, J M X Designs. Um, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna actually turn this speaking over to uh, Matt first to walk through the site plan and then I'll turn it over to Bryce to walk through uh, the proposed floor plans and architectural changes and then I will come uh, back up on the screen to uh, walk through the zoning relief that we're requesting. So Matt, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All righty, thanks, Liza. Uh, hi, y'all. Uh, for the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxter and I Engineering and Surveying. Uh, so what I'd like to do is just quickly walk you through the existing conditions plan. Uh, the project consists of uh, ten forty and ten fifty six I N O Road. Uh, ten forty is the service building uh, located on the, I'll say, south uh, easterly portion of the lot. Uh, at the uh, top portion of the lot is uh, ten fifty six uh, I N O Road. The total project area is approximately two point nine four acres. We have about three hundred feet of frontage along I N O Road. Um, as noted into the record, we have zoning districts B and H B. You'll see the zoning line that falls about the the rear uh, quarter of the building. Um, uh, on the left hand side of that line is the uh, H B and on the right is the B. We are also in the G P overlay district. Uh, there are three existing buildings in the project area. Uh, located on the the bottom of the sheet, there is the main service building and then up on the top of the sheet on the left is the the existing, there you go, yeah, the um uh, prior rental building. It's actually uh, not being utilized currently. And then you have the car wash building uh, in the right corner there. Uh, those buildings uh, total about nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety four square feet in footprint. Um, the existing impervious coverage on the lot is eighty two point eight percent of the project lot. This is a preexisting nonconforming condition in the G P overlay, which as I'm sure you all know, the G P is a fifty percent requirement. Uh, there are two existing uh, access uh, entrances onto uh, I N O Road. Um, the existing parking lot and car uh, storage areas on the uh, project area is approximately a hundred and two spaces. And the uh, site is currently connected to public water, public sewer, and then also electric and natural gas. The services are uh, also included to the buildings. So with that, I will jump to the proposed. Um, so the uh, project as was right into the record, there's a small uh, demolition of the front portion of the building. Um, if you zoom in on that front area, um, if you're looking at it, there's a very, you know, small section that's gonna actually be removed. Then that darker gray shading that you're seeing, that is the proposed addition to the front. Um, then right behind that, the lighter gray shading is interior renovation on the existing footprint. And then to the far right, the back of the building, that darker gray shading, that is um, the rear addition, the two-story addition as read into the record. Uh, that front portion renovation is just for uh, improvement of uh, customer reception. And the rear addition um, is for part storage and employee use and uh, the architects will walk through um, the interior spaces for you. Um, on ten fifty six, which is the upper portion of the lot. You can see the gray outline that is the uh, existing rental building that is being uh, fully removed. Um, and that will be infilled uh, with um, parking for uh, vehicle storage for the uh, service center. Um, the proposed building additions uh, meet all the required uh, lot set pack setbacks per zoning. Uh, the total lot coverage by structures is actually being reduced uh, from what the existing condition is. It's uh, being reduced down to eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy square feet. Um, that's well under what the zoning allows. Um, uh, H B allows thirty percent. We're at thirteen point one percent in the H B district. And the B district allows thirty five percent lot coverage. We're at eighteen point four. So again, well under. Um, the impervious coverage overall is also being reduced by over three thousand square feet. So this is making the site more conforming to the G P overlay requirements. Uh, parking being provided uh, is fifty one parking spaces as required by zoning. This is for the customers and employees. Uh, three of those parking spaces are handicap accessible spaces as required. And then there are sixty nine spaces that will be for vehicle storage. Um, the parking setbacks around the project are preexisting nonconforming and those are generally unchanged with this proposal. Um, as far as um, parking landscape ratios, a ten percent requirement. Again, the site is preexisting nonconforming to this, almost nonexistent. I will say uh, from an existing standpoint, we are increasing that by almost fivefold, five times. Um, so we are making this more conforming. Um, there are to the uh, more conforming to the parking lot uh, landscape ratio. Um, we are also adding uh, in lot parking lot trees. Um, again, making that more conforming. Uh, no trees existed. The interior, we're providing six part uh, six uh, parking lot trees. And then we have also added uh, street trees along the frontage. Again, that under existing condition is uh, currently nonconforming with the street trees that are being added. We're actually bringing it into conformance uh, with the zoning requirements. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the J M X uh, team and let them walk through the uh, architectural aspect for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, Bryce Johnson here, J M B, one of the Group One Architects. Uh, simple overview of the first and second floor plan here. Red hatches on the left side being a portion of the building that we're gonna remove. In its existing condition, it's a customer lounge that does not receive, you know, queuing of cars like a normal service drive would do. We're more or less on the proposed plan. I'm gonna go back for a footprint that's one for one, more or less in size. Uh, as you move to the right of the building where the existing parts and service reception is, we're gonna make that entire area a customer reception area, ADA bathrooms, improve the conditions for the customer experience and arrival. Um, as you move into the service shop, it's pretty much gonna stay a service shop. What we're doing in terms of upgrades is getting the compressor room, which is shown in the middle of the shop out of there. Getting the fluid storage, which is in the top right corner of the shop out of there, moving that into what will be the rear expansion. Trying to do, you know, more conscious things with how we store fluids, deal with compressors and, you know, give the techs a better work environment. As Lisa said, we are adding one lift where that compressor bay in the middle of the shop gets removed. Um, and you'll kind of see that on the first floor plan. The the second floor plan on this sheet just is saying we're moving the wooden mezzanine parts department that's over the customer lounge. That's currently not conforming or rated in a proper manner. So we're gonna remove that, put it on the rear of the building. Uh, can we go to the proposed plans real quick? Uh, so on this plan, the additions are kind of hatch with a diagonal hatch. I don't know if it's easy to see on the PDF here, but uh, basically the front gets the service drive that I talked about where the lounge used to be. Two lane drive, advisors able to move people in and out of there pretty easily. You get full size ADA bathrooms as you move into the right of the customer lounge and just a gen genuinely better customer experience for everybody that has to be there for a while. Shop gets upgraded, finishes, gets a remake. And then the compressor and fluids, all of that high pile storage gets moved into the parks department and the break room and all of that gets put on the back of the building. The bottom plan kind of shows you that we've removed the second floor over the customer lounge area on the front of the building. Um, with the renovation of this building, we're getting we're getting rid of the mini splits that are kind of all over the ground, the A C systems. And we're putting two new R T Us on the roof. Those will be screened from the street and they will be high efficiency. So in terms of energy usage, you should have high efficiency H B A C, L E D lights, those kinds of upgrades throughout. Um, net loss, you lose about two thousand square foot on the front of that building and then we gain about twenty five hundred square feet on the front of the building. You gain almost about two thousand square foot on the rear of the building as well in terms of footprint. And that's a, uh, can you go to the three D views, next page actual? So in terms of before being at the top, after below, going pretty much with the the same look you have today, the silver A C M for Toyota. Red A C M band for Toyota and then the service signs. Again, building a proper parapet, getting rid of that shed roof and trying to hide the R T Us on top of that roof, which you can't even see in this view. So.
Great. Thanks, Bryce. Um, so I wanted to uh, switch now to the zoning relief that we're requesting. Um, but before doing that, just uh, highlight some of the prior processes on these properties. So there are two prior zoning decisions that affect the ten fifty six I N O Road property. So this is the site or the portion of the site that has the car wash and the uh, the rental car car uh, structure that's being uh, proposed to be demolished. Um, there was a zoning board decision from December of two thousand eight. It was a conditional use special permit that authorized uh, that property, the ten fifty six portion of the project site to be used for the parking of um vehicles for sales and also for vehicles to be serviced. Uh, that decision uh, in its findings and in its history um, also confirms that the ten forty I N O Road portion of the subject property um, was illegally, it wasn't, is illegally preexisting nonconforming use. Um, then about a year later in two thousand nine, the zoning board issued appeal number two thousand nine dash seventy. Um, again, another conditional use special permit decision uh, for uh, development in the H B district. This decision authorized that uh, one-story auto showroom car rental building and the car wash building that um, you saw on the site plan that Matt showed you earlier. Uh, one of the criteria, as the board knows, is uh, for granting a special permit is that site plan review has to have been uh, obtained. Um, here that that has occurred, uh, formal site plan review was approved by the Site Plan Review Committee for these improvements um, back in December. So we filed a a special permit application that um, as was indicated during the uh, reading of this project into the record, seeks uh, several special permits. And I'll just quickly hit on them and then we'll go through them. Um, so the first sort of two on this screen are related to use. Um, we sought a special permit under two forty twenty five C, which is the auto service and repair building, which is being expanded. And that is a a conditional use in the highway business zoning uh, portion of the property. The portion of the property that's in uh, the B zoning district um, allows the use as a matter of right. Um, in addition, we've also sought a special permit pursuant to two forty ninety four B, which is an expansion of a preexisting nonconforming use. Um, that's being sought uh, as the property is within, as Matt mentioned, the groundwater protection overlay district. Um, as uh, I mentioned earlier and as indicated in the existing special permits. Um, auto repair and servicing on the ten forty I N O Road portion of the property is currently preexisting nonconforming. Um, within the existing uh, general auto repair area on the floor, as Bryce mentioned, one additional service bay is proposed. Uh, therefore necessitating uh, this special permit. Um, I would note that uh, no auto repair work or servicing of vehicles is proposed on the portion of the property that's uh, at ten fifty six I N O Road. So all of the servicing itself is contained uh, within the ten forty I N O Road portion of the site. Um, the next two special permits are really dimensional. So special permit two forty ninety three B is uh, allows for alteration of a preexisting nonconforming structure. Um, as Matt mentioned, the site is currently preexisting nonconforming to several dimensional requirements. Um, and the alteration of the building uh, therefore requires this relief. Um, had this not been in the G P district, this special permit wouldn't have been required because two forty ninety three A would allow this uh, for conforming uses, but because this is a nonconforming use, we do need this special permit. Um, I would note that uh, as Matt mentioned, there are no new dimensional nonconformities being created. And there is no intensification of any existing dimensional nonconformities. And in fact, uh, one of the nonconformities that exists right now will become conforming uh, with the proposed changes. And then finally, we're seeking to modify special permit number two thousand nine dash seventy to reflect the changes that are shown on the plans that were submitted uh, that were just reviewed with the board. So the applicable standards, there's a couple. Um, the conditional use special permit has uh, its own standard, which is actually very similar to the general special permit standard contained in two forty one twenty five C two, and it's generally no substantial detriment or substantially adversely adversely affecting public health, safety, welfare or convenience. Um, the two forty ninety four B special permit, which is the expansion of the nonconforming use uh, has its own uh, requirements and findings. Um, it can't be more detrimental to the neighborhood and then it's subject to additional requirements that are contained in ninety four B one through three, which I'll review in just a minute. And at the discretion of the board, if if needed to reduce impact on the neighborhood, there's some examples of additional requirements the board could impose uh, contained in subsection four of that of that section. Um, we uh, respectfully suggest that this project uh, complies with all of the applicable standards of review. Um, aesthetically, the project is going to uh, approve improve curb appeal with a much more modern design that uh, better aligns with the existing uh, dealership located uh, adjacent to this property. Um, the project will enhance the customer amenities and convenience. As Bryce mentioned, there's a new reception area, enlarged customer lounge, improved and increased parking, E V charging stations, stations are being introduced into the site. Um, the landscaping is also being increased as Matt highlighted in his comments. Uh, there's additional trees being planted within the front yard setback along Route one thirty two, which will bring the site into compliance with the zoning ordinance's tree requirements. So that's an existing nonconformity that will then become conforming with this project. And as Matt mentioned, the interior landscape uh, is being improved, enlarged and becoming more conforming. Um, the project is also decreasing the amount of uh, nonconforming impervious coverage. There's a reduction of about thirty three hundred square feet of uh, pavement and impervious cover, so it will become more conforming. Um, site wide, the total floor area is being reduced with the two, the demolition on the front of the building, the two additions on the building and the elimination of the one-story uh, structure. Um, the overall total floor area in the site is decreasing by about sixteen hundred square feet. Uh, traffic circulation will be improved on site and vehicular uh, safety and convenience will also be improved with a more organized uh, drop off and pickup uh, interior reception area. Um, and stormwater also uh, is also being improved on the site. Um, in terms of hazardous materials, this is in a G P district and I know this is an area of um, always concern by the town and the boards. Um, this project and the renovations really present an opportunity for uh, consolidation, reorganization and modernization of hazardous materials containment. Um, as you can see on the slide, the existing conditions, there are a total of nine tanks currently located in the service area and they're spread out in different areas of the service floor. Collectively, these nine tanks contain over uh, contain a total of four thousand three hundred and fifty gallons of hazardous materials. And I've broken down the tanks on this slide by uh, their sizes and uh, the number of tanks. Under proposed conditions, um, the there will be a dedicated containment room where the tanks will be located. And there will be a total of five tanks proposed. Collectively, those five tanks will contain a total of three thousand two hundred and seventy five gallons of hazardous materials. So there's a reduction in the number of tanks and also a reduction in the amount uh, the gallonage of these materials. In addition, all of the new tanks, unlike the existing, um, all of them will be double walled and equipped with atmospheric and emergency vents. As an additional safety feature, the new waste pumps and tanks will also be equipped with an overflow alarm system to prevent the tanks from reaching greater than a ninety percent capacity. In addition, with the reconfiguration of the shop floor and shop will um, convert the uh, waste uh, the fluid system to a pulse fluid management system which utilizes inline solenoids to prevent accidental discharge of oil products. So uh, in summing, the hazardous materials uh, component, the project will implement uh, superior safety and containment measures. The project will decrease the number of tanks that will be located uh, within the facility um, almost in half, going from nine to five, so four fewer. And the project will reduce the overall quantity of hazardous material containing tanks by um, over a thousand gallons. So turning now to the standard uh, set forth in the ordinance in two forty ninety four B for an expansion of a nonconforming use. Um, I would note uh, that the square footage of the auto shop where the work is done on the cars is not changing. Um, as Bryce mentioned, the interior reconfigurations allow for the introduction of one new service bay within that existing shop footprint. So uh, one through three are the required findings that the board needs to make for uh, this particular section of the ordinance. Uh, one is that the proposed expansion conforms to zoning setbacks. That complies, as Matt mentioned, the building as expanded uh, fully complies with all of the setback requirements. Number two is that the proposed expansion is on the same lot as occupied by the nonconforming use. That also complies. The auto servicing is only occurring on the portion of the site uh, at ten forty uh, I N O Road where it currently exists. Um, number three is that the proposed new use is not expanded beyond the zoning district in existence when it became nonconforming. Um, that complies. Uh, this is not being expanded be beyond the zoning district. Um, and then four are in the zoning ordinance, contain some measures that at the board's discretion, it can require to um, reduce impact to the neighborhood. Uh, again, I would note that this use on the site uh, dates back before ownership by uh, Hyannis Toyota. It was Corson's of Cape Cod, so it's been a a long time use and this is really an opportunity to um, improve uh, the uh, the service at the site. Um, so to the extent the board feels that these should be imposed, I would suggest uh, it's unnecessary to reduce impact to the neighborhood. But we're and we're actually already doing many of the um, items that the zoning ordinance suggests to uh, reduce impact. This includes um, improving and reorganizing the parking areas, adding parking spaces. It's can be very tight right now. Improving pedestrian and vehicular safety and circulation and increased plantings uh, along Route one thirty two and also within the site itself. So um, wrapping up and uh, thank you for your time. Um, respectfully, we suggest the project meets all of the required special permit criteria. Um, as noted, it uh, improves on many of the existing dimensional nonconformities and doesn't create any new ones or intensify any existing ones. And in fact, eliminates uh, an existing dimensional nonconformity. Uh, the aesthetic and the design and curb appeal will all be improved with this project. Um, it'll be safer and more convenient for vehicular circulation. Um, importantly, there's a reduction of hazardous material tanks, both in terms of the number and their gallonage. And uh, that's coupled with improved containment and safety measures. Um, therefore, we respectfully suggest it meets all of the required standards of no substantial adverse effect or detriment and actually in fact exceeds those standards as it um, across the board represents an improvement to the criteria as compared to existing conditions. And uh, that uh, Mr. Chairman concludes our presentation. I'm gonna stop sharing. And our team is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant or the team? Go ahead, Mark.
Hi, um, just a couple. You you hit my biggest one with the um, with the hazardous materials in the G P. Um, one real quick one. I don't know if it's mentioned, the car wash is staying?
Correct.
Okay, car wash is staying. Um. My only other question really is, at site plan review, was there a fairly um in-depth either discussion or look at in-depth either discussion or look at new signage and lighting on this building? And the only reason I ask, I know it's not quite directly what we're asking for, but that is coming up, that oftentimes we're coming back for signage. These new type of dealerships are, are sometimes have a more national look lighting system that has become, is, we've seen in front of us, and it's become a bit of a problem. Was there any, was there any discussion of that at the time at site plan review? Did we look at that?
Matt, do you recall if that has come up?
Yeah, I mean, there was no, you know, specific discussion. I don't think, Mark, that there's any submissions, and you know, Bryce can probably expound, but as far as having to come back to ZBA for any requests, I mean, there's gonna be, you know, the standard, you know, lighting was discussed as far as photometrics plan, which will be submitted. You know, it's gonna, there's gonna be a, a few LED fixtures added and changed out. And then signage, I believe, you know, with the anticipation is that that would conform to the zoning requirements, I believe it was, I guess.
Okay, so no, no framed lighting on the front? I was just, I was looking at the three D here, and I was just wondering, is there any sort of, you know, framed lighting in that service reception area, any type of like neon tubes or any? And again, I'm just throwing it out there because we saw this, run up against it a couple of times, right?
Bryce, can you expand on that at all?
Yeah, the signage vendor for Toyota will apply for a permit separately on this and then meet requirements of square footage sizes and things of that nature. What I'm showing is more graphical. I do believe the service reception lights are internally illuminated, to what degree I'm not entirely sure. For automation purposes, on that axon that we show on the entrance side of the service drive where the, the service signage is kind of on the side there, we will have directional arrows that are LED that show green or a red X indicating customers to enter on that side or not enter. But in terms of overall signage illumination, I don't, we're not really trying to go for much on that. I know the Toyota showrooms have that big white illuminated portal, but we're not doing anything like that here.
Yeah, this is, what you see here on A two O two on the elevations is accurate. During the day, the service signage is black in appearance, and then at night, it can be illuminated internally to look white. But it's not bright by any means, no.
Okay. The signage side, like what's, what we're being shown there on the building, I mean, there's not three sides or, you know, that it, again, you know, it, it's obviously within a relatively close distance of the road. Just wondering if it had been looked at, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's just these two sides that'll have the signs, service reception towards the main highway, and then the service entry sign over where you enter from the curb cut. That's it.
All right, and there was no, there was no additional requirements or suggestions at site plan review for the access in out? I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough turn, or can be a tough turn, sometimes, like, is there no left turn to go down towards the mall? Is there, is there gonna be any additional signage that is gonna prevent that sort of crazy moves out?
Yeah, there was, there was no changes required to the movements, but there was, you know, we've added some additional pavement striping, we've added, you know, the islands, which should help with that circulation at those entrances. And then we also, we've created it so you have, you know, an entrance in and an entrance out. So there is a, on the, that's what the plan, it's on the,
I'll pull it up again.
I guess the Westerly entrances, a, you know, the do not enter. So you're coming in one entrance and you're leaving the other. You still have full movements there, but that way you're not, it's not a free for all coming in either entrance that you want. So that was done to help, you know, clean up the circulation and make it safer, so.
Okay, yeah, that sounds, that, that makes a lot of sense based on just how I've seen traffic move there before. They try to make a left, and it's just instead of turning. Okay, thank you.
Any other board members have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Paul here. I, I noticed on one of the prints that water to the existing car wash remains. It, it does, does the car wash remain, but the building is removed?
Correct, the car wash structure is remaining. It's the front one-story building that was previously used for auto rentals. That's proposed to be removed, and I can't share my screen anymore. I can pull up the site plan if that's helpful.
That's okay, I understand. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Well, Eliza, you can share your screen if you need to.
Okay, thank you, David.
Attorney Cox, by right in the B district, is that you're, that's under two forty twenty one, right?
Correct.
What are we calling that? Because I, what, from what I see, I don't see auto repair as by right.
Garages, auto gasoline, oil fill, filling station and garages are allowed, and then there is a provision in here that, let me get it. Any other business use of a similar nature. So we did discuss this at site plan review, not specifically, but we did go over the zoning relief that we were requesting. And so I think that garages or auto garages are allowed, and that would be similar to this. The auto repair.
So there's gonna be no auto repair going on in the portion of the lot that's in the B?
No, filling stations and garages, I think within the meaning of the B, includes like garage repair. Otherwise, I mean, it would be silly to have a gasoline and oil filling station and garage that was just storage. So the way I read six twenty one six is that the term garages there includes repairing, not just storage.
I think that's a little bit of a stretch when in HB it's very specifically saying automobile repair.
Well, the B, the B language, I mean, if you look at the B language, the uses, you know, these are very antiquated. Also retail service or shop, I mean, I, I talk about this, but if you look at the B, it's HB was rewritten recently, so it's a much more modern language in the zoning ordinance, but the B talks about confectioners and dyers and dressmakers and furriers. This is really antiquated language, and so where it says gasoline and oil filling stations and garages, plus any other ordinary business use of a similar nature, to me, that would clearly encompass this type of use. Notwithstanding, I mean, if you disagreed with me, then it is a preexisting nonconforming use that's just continuing on within the B portion, and we have sought relief for the preexisting nonconforming use.
And then what's the distance from that B line? Because I think you'd get thirty feet anyways, right, when you have a crossed lot? I don't know how far that is from that line to the back of the lot.
I don't, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, Jake, but yeah, it's probably in that, in that neighborhood of around thirty feet. Probably a little bit greater than that, though, I would say.
And then Attorney Cox, can you just sort of summarize the space of the existing building that's being reconfigured to, to allow one more bay? What's that space now? You know, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about it being an intensification of use versus just a reconfiguration of use.
Well, that, I mean, that is, I think adding a service bay is probably an expansion of the nonconforming use, which is why we sought the special permit pursuant to two forty ninety four B. But right now, that space, and Bryce can be more specific, but it's, there's a compressor room, and then there's, there's a compressor area, it's not a room within the auto floor. And also, the existing tanks are scattered throughout the existing shop. Those are being reconsolidated in a containment room, and by moving those two features, it opens up space within the current footprint of the shop to allow for one additional bay.
That's right, Eliza, because on the, the south side of the floor plan that you shared, the compressor room is literally in the middle of that space. I want to say it's either a CMU, like kind of stem wall with a wood frame mezzanine, and the compressor is literally just making a ton of noise in the shop. And by removing that out of the way, I can literally put it right there. So by getting that out of the way, I'm able to put another service bay, tech bay in that spot, giving them more use, more function.
And so, so Jake, so it's within that existing footprint, and they're really just adding an overhead door, right?
Yeah, basically, it creates a middle of the shop there, yeah.
And that'll just be the same, like, that'll just add an additional lift for an additional car to be serviced, basically?
That's correct.
So that's basically like right in here.
Okay, and then Matt, so the existing pervious, impervious in the GP, we're already nonconforming, but we're not going any more nonconforming?
Correct, it's actually a reduction of a little over three thousand square feet. We're going from like eighty two point eight just down to around eighty percent, so eighty, eighty-one percent. So it's a reduction, yep.
Okay.
Becoming more conforming.
More conforming, yep.
Okay, those are my three biggest questions. Does anyone else have any questions before we open for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, it's Manny. I have one question for Attorney Cox, if I may.
Go ahead.
It's kind of technical, but I'm wondering why you're framing this as a modification or an amendment to the existing special permit? Why can't they exist very item? In other words, that special permit did whatever it did, and you're now seeking a new special permit? I, I guess part of the reason I'm asking is we actually are not shown the prior special permit, and it makes it seem as if the board's being asked to amend something it did not see.
I mean, I, well, you know, thi- this particular board didn't see, it's part of the record. So it, it is referenced in the application materials and, and part of the record for the property. And the zoning board did approve it back in two thousand nine. I, I recognize there are different members on the board than there are now. You know, I think that special permit authorized the car wash, and so that's what essentially is being carried through with this request. Otherwise, the, the site changes are all pretty much as shown on the plan. So I mean, I think if the board preferred to just reapprove the plan as proposed and not see the need to modify the prior special permit, that's fine. But I thought it would be sort of more comprehensive to reference the prior special permit, ask that it be amended to reflect the new conditions that are proposed in that the car wash is remaining and that was already approved by the board.
Okay, I mean, maybe it's a type of technical, like, we're not amending that, I don't think, that special permit. This thing stands as a subsequent request, building on what's already been approved, I guess.
Correct, then that's fine. I mean, I think if the board wants to handle it that way, I don't have an issue with that. I was just trying to be, I think, more comprehensive, particularly since the car wash is staying and that was already approved in that prior special permit decision.
All right, not a big point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions before we open for public comment? All right, I will open for public comment. Is anyone here to speak to this? Anna, we did not receive anything, I don't believe, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone, no one wants to speak to this? All right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Roll call vote on closing public comment. Herb Bunsy?
In favor.
Paul Pinnard?
Favor.
Mark Hansen?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so public comment is closed. Does anyone have any other questions before we close the public hearing and deliberate or make findings? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Took it, Paul.
All right, roll call vote on closing the public hearing. No more testimony after this. Herb Bunsy?
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Mark Hansen?
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so the public hearing is closed. Does anyone want to make findings on this or have any sort of thoughts?
Yeah, this is Paul. I'll make findings.
Okay.
Okay, this is finding is with respect to appeal number two thousand twenty four dash oh four eight, Group One Realty, Inc. They've applied for a special permit and has to do with parcel with ten forty and ten fifty six Iano Road, Iano Road, Hyannis, Mass, as shown on the Sessors map, two ninety four is parcel oh two and oh seven two respectively. It's located in the Highway HB District and the Business Zoning District. I find that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for grant of a special permit. Section two forty dash ninety four B allows for a special permit. After an evaluation of all the evidence presented, I believe, I find that the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Among the support for those findings is the fact that there is a reduction of hazardous material. There are landscape improvements to bring it into conformity with requirements. There is a reduction of lot coverage, there is a decrease in impervious service. Certainly, there's an increase in safety in the storage of fluids. There's an increased energy efficiency, and there's no new dimensional or intensification of nonconformities. Number three, a site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with Article nine herein, subject going to the issuance of a special permit, see letter dated December tenth, two thousand and four. I find that any proposed, I know that any proposed expansion in the use shall conform to the established setbacks for the zoning district which is located or such greater setbacks that the zoning board appeals may require due to the nature and use of the impact and its impact on the neighborhood and surrounding properties. The setbacks have not been affected by this except for the demolishing of the former car rental agency building. Any proposed expansion use, I find that any proposed expansion of the, excuse me, I find that the proposed use and expansion is on the same lot as occupied by the nonconforming use on the date it became nonconforming. In fact, it becomes less nonconforming with a proposed special permit. The proposed new use is not expanded beyond the zoning district in existence on the date it became nonconforming. I find that, at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals, improvements may be required in order to reduce the impact on the neighborhood and surrounding properties, including but not limited to the following conformity, greater conformity of signage to the requirements of Article seven, the addition of off-street parking and loading facilities, improved pedestrian safety, traffic circulation, and reduction in the number and or width of curb cuts, increase of open, of open space of vegetated buffers and screening along adjoining lots and roadways. The absence, the applicant has demonstrated maximum possible compliance with two forty fifty three landscape requirements for parking lot section F, section F applicable. It's clear that in addition to passing a site plan review, that the addition of trees into a lot, which is not have existing trees and conforming to the landscape requirements along Iano Road, Route one thirty two is noted. The board, I find the board must find that the proposed repairs, alterations, and expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. It's clear that when you add the safety, increased safety of fluids, the increased landscaping, which would make it more appeal, curb appeal, and the existing energy savings or conservancy satisfy this. Those are my findings.
I second those findings, Paul. Jake, you're muted there, bud.
Hello, hello.
Sorry. I, so yeah, we have a first and a second to approve appeal number two thousand twenty four dash zero four eight. Roll call vote based on Paul's findings. Herb Bunsy?
Favor.
Paul Pinnard? Mark Hansen?
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. And then Paul, did you have some conditions?
Attorney Cox, you've seen these, and these are satisfactory to you?
Yes, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yeah?
Could I, could I just ask a very quick question?
Um, could I, could I just ask a very quick question on the, on the last line of the suggested permit conditions, just in the first paragraph? It might be a nitpick, but uh, says that an interior renovation that will result in one additional service bay at ten forty and ten fifty-six Iano Road. It kind of reads like there could be one on each. Am I nitpicking this or can we be more specific that it's in one, but is it one? Is it because it crosses the one building?
Yeah.
Says and, so I'm just.
Yeah. The, yeah, the service bay is actually within the ten forty uh, portion of the subject property. So I think um.
Is that likely to change?
No, no, we'd have to come back to the board if they tried to change that, uh, because the site plan doesn't show it on ten fif- on the ten fifty-six portion. And there is another condition that says no changes without board approval.
Okay.
I think you've already referenced in the findings, the address. So I think if the board just wanted to end that condition after service bay period, um, that would be fine too.
Let's, uh, my, I would pose that we uh, ended at after uh, one additional service bay.
Thank you.
Alright, roll call vote on the findings as modified um, by Paul. Herbunsey?
Favor.
Paul Pinnard?
Yeah, in favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so appeal number twenty twenty-four.
Before you close this, Jake, I would like to also say that this, uh, those conditions, one through four, uh, as number one is amended uh, appear in the staff report dated January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, so Attorney Cox, you have approval in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero four eight.
Thank you very much. Uh, we really appreciate your questions and time.
Yep, thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero four nine, Lisa Talbot, trustee of the Lisa A. Talbot Living Trust has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-two B, nonconforming buildings or structures used as single and two-family residences. The applicant proposes to alter and expand the existing one-story attached garage, which is pre-existing nonconforming as to setback, by replacing the existing garage with a two-story garage in the same footprint. No additional nonconformities will be created. The subject property is located at sixty-five Stonehedge Drive, Barstool, Mass, as shown on assessors map three one seven is parcel zero five nine. It's located in Residence F two RF two zoning district. Um, again, sitting on this will be our regular members. Herbunsey? Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and myself. Everyone good to sit on this? Alright, Attorney Rose, whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Good evening. I'm Marion Rose, um, for the record, here on behalf of Leslie Talbot. Um, with me is Diana Zaglio. Um, she's a designer from the design build firm of McKe- McKeon Associates, Mcfee and Associates. Um, as you've mentioned, the project is relatively modest. What we're doing is proposing to take the existing one-story garage down because it couldn't support that second floor and rebuild a garage of a similar design with two stories um, in the same exact footprint with a new foundation. Anna's gonna help me a bit, um, pulling up the site plan. Anna, would you mind pulling up the site plan now?
Do you want?
Thank you so much. And so the pro- the property is undersized. It's on a corner lot. It's forwarded by Fraser Court and Stonehedge Drive. See if we can get that.
Sorry, it's taking a minute.
Not to worry, I'll, I'll keep, and then I'm gonna skip right to the elevations uh, right after this to keep you busy. Um. When we get to the site plan, you'll see that there's one nonconforming setback. And it's that second front setback on Fraser Court.
Marion, is this not the, you don't need the floor plans?
Uh, we can, we can go right to the elevations because that's all I wanted to say about the site plan.
Okay.
That's perfect. Let's do the elevations. That's great. Okay, so these are showing the existing elevations. And on the upper left-hand corner, that's kind of the money shot. That's the left elevation. And that's the side from Fraser Court showing on the left-hand side, the existing garage. Um, and below, you can see, it's a little bit small, but you can see the floor plans. Um, currently and as proposed, there'll be, it'll be three bedrooms. It'll remain three bedrooms. No additional bedrooms are going to be added. Um, if we could go to the next page in those elevations. So here is the left elevation as proposed. Um, the height, I think I might have a typo in my summary. The height is changing just a teeny bit. Um. I think it's twenty-one feet and four inches existing at the highest part of the house. And with the garage, it's going to be twenty-one feet, four and a half inches. So just about the same. Um, and as you can see, the design, it matches the rest of this Cape style house. We can skip a bit if you want to see the floor plans. I believe they're going to be legible. And so, you know, we're adding about four hundred and thirty-five, maybe it's thirty-nine square feet in gross floor area. Um, the area over the garage, the Board of Health does consider that to be a bedroom. And so what's happening is on the second floor of the main house, they're widening um, an area by five feet. So there's a room that used to be a bedroom that's no longer considered a bedroom by the Board of Health. Um, Anna, if we could skip to the photographs that were that exhibit, that's all.
Yours.
Thank you. I wanted to just emphasize with a few photographs, I wanted to show you, if you haven't been to the site, what the house looks like. And then um, some neighboring houses that also have attached garages and attached two-story garages. So what there was to show, what we're proposing is comparable to what's in the neighborhood. This is a view of the house um, from Stonehedge. And um, sort of on a, you can see the garage um, to the, to the left on the back. We can skip to the next photo. Thank you, Anna. And that's the, the same elevation, seeing the garage um, on the left-hand side. That's, that's the house. Um, we're asking to change. Sixty five Stonehedge. If we can go to the next. And this is a house directly across the street. It has an attached two-story garage. So it's quite similar to what we're proposing. But without that court, it's not on a corner lot. We can go to the last one. And this is the house directly across on Fraser Court. Um, it also has an attached garage. Thank you. So in order to complete the redevelopment, the applicant seeking a special permit from the Board of Appeals in accordance with sections two forty ninety-two B and two forty one twenty-five C dash two of the Barstool zoning ordinance. The board's authorized to grant such a special permit upon first making findings that the ordinance provides for a special permit relief in this, in a case such as this, that the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. It would not be a substantial detriment to the public good or neighborhood affected. And three, that the site plan has been reviewed and found to be approvable in accordance with Article Nine, subject only to the issuance of a special permit. And four, that the proposed alteration or expansion will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. Briefly, I'd like to just outline why we think this project meets all of those stated criteria for a special permit relief. The application does fall squarely within a category for which special permits are allowed. Uh, the project consists of a renovation expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling, which does not increase the existing nonconformities, nor does it create new ones. So it's squarely within that category of projects allowable by special permit. Two, the proposed alteration expansion will, are not substantially more detrimental to the environment, community, or historical character of the neighborhood. Here, um, the proposed expansion was only referred to the ZBA by the Building Department after it was determined that the existing foundation needed to be replaced. And that the existing garage was in the second front setback on Fraser. The work proposed, adding that second floor to the garage in the same style as existing garage, is of modest nature. The proposed work expands the gross floor area by no more than four hundred and fifty-eight square feet. The footprint remains in the same, the same, and there are no new nonconformities created. The increased massing caused by the proposed garage second floor is comparable in size to other homes in the neighborhood with similar two-story attached garages, as we've shown on those photographs we shared. Um, there's, we don't believe there'll be any negative environmental impact. Um. Again, there's no increase in the number of bedrooms. The height is more or less the same and conforming where thirty feet is allowed. The applicants are unaware of any other neighborhood concerns for these reasons and those below. Proposal, we believe, is not detrimental to the environment, community, or historical character of the neighborhood. Three, the site plan's been reviewed by town staff. It's been found to be approvable. And four, for the reasons given in paragraph two above, the project as proposed, I, um, we believe will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwellings. And for all those reasons, we ask respectfully that you grant a special permit up for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Attorney Rose. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mark, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just one. It's more of a point of clarification. On, on proposed second floor plan A four, um, I, I see where it's showing the uh, the existing landing at the top. The wall is being removed. That says existing library. And then over on the new addition, it says proposed office. Could you just clarify again where, what's going where? Did you say the bedroom?
Sure, it's, I mean, the, it's a little confusing because the proposed garage, and tell me if I'm answering your question. The proposed garage floor area, it says proposed office. That's going to be the use. But the Board of Health considers that a bedroom. So we're counting that towards the bedroom count, even though it's going to be used for an office, not a bedroom. And the area in the, the existing dwelling on the second floor, there's a room that used to be a bedroom, but it had a door, a closed door. And now it has an open facet opening. So it's no longer considered a bedroom.
A little confusing, not from your standpoint, but basically there. Yeah, I mean, you've got, it's still something on the other side with a closet and everything else. It doesn't matter, but I, I just, again, if they, if they say that's a bedroom, then.
It has to go through the smell test of the Board of Health. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question on um, on the garage. And I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong, a wrong view, but it looked like one of the um, uh, one of the plans for the new addition shows a single garage door?
Yes, on the first, let's see.
So they're going from a two-car garage to a one-car?
Yes, they're reconfiguring the first floor of the garage. So there's going to be a mudroom and laundry room. Um, and just a space for one car in that garage. Um, the floor area is not changing, just how they're using it will change.
Right. Okay, so that's, that's correct then. Okay.
Anyone else? Alright, uh, we can open public comment. Uh, was there any public comment on this? Is anyone here to speak to this? If you're here to speak to this, just unmute yourself. Alright. Yep, go ahead. Say your name and address for the record.
Paul Galvin, uh, seventy-two Stonehedge Drive. I'm a neighbor right across the road from um, from the house. And I have no objections whatsoever. I think it'll make a nice addition to it.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in and sharing your feedback. Anyone else here to speak to this? Alright, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Roll call vote to closing public comment. Herbunsey?
In favor.
Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So public comments closed. Um. We need to close the public hearing unless anyone has any other questions or wants to deliberate more on this. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Herbunsey?
Oops.
Paul Pinnard?
Paul?
Paul? Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So the public hearing is closed. Uh, no more testimony can be taken. So it brings us back to make findings. Does anyone want to make findings on this? I think it's pretty straightforward here.
I'll take a stab at it, Mr. Chairman, if no one else wants to.
Go for it, Aaron. That'd be great. Thank you.
Alright, and this is in reference to special permit number twenty twenty-four dash oh four nine Talbot. Uh, Leslie Talbot, trustee of the Leslie A. Talbot Living Trust, apply for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-two B, nonconforming buildings or structures used as a single and two-family residences. The applicant proposes to alter and expand the existing one-story attached garage, which is previous to nonconforming as to setback by replacing the existing garage with a two-story garage, one car, in the same footprint. No additional nonconformities will be created. The subject property is located at sixty-five Stonehedge Drive, Barstool, Massachusetts, the so, assessors map three seventeen is parcel oh five nine. It is located in the Residence F two parentheses RF dash two zoning district. Hold on one second when my page loads here. Um, duh, 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 duh. So a special permit is granted to Leslie Talbot, trustee, uh, living pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-two B. Um, buh, buh, bum. Number two, the site development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan entitled plot plan at sixty-five Stonehedge Drive, Barstool, Mass, by J.C. Engineering Incorporated dated December fifth. The proposed alterations of the structure will, shall represent full build out of the lot. I'm sorry, I'm reading conditions. My fault. Sorry about that. Let me go back here for a second. And just the page um, doesn't load as quickly as I'd like. I apologize. So for spec- for all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to section two forty dash one twenty-five C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant staff and members of the public, and after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. Number one, the application falls within a specific category. Uh, expected in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section two forty dash ninety-four B allows for the special permit. Uh, after evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. It would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Clearly, the attorney showed us um, not only the visual photographs, but also of neighboring um, structures, uh, very similar to what is proposed. And we also had a um, gentleman in support, uh, who lives across the street. Um, the site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with Article Nine herein, subject only to the issuance of a special permit. Uh, site plan review is not required for single-family dwellings. And further, section two forty dash ninety-two B requires that the board to find that the proposed alteration or expansion will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. I think we're all in agreement of that at this case. Um, seems pretty straightforward to me. Those are my findings.
I will second those findings.
Alright, we have a first and a second. Um, based on um, Aaron's findings on appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero four nine, I roll call vote. Herbunsey?
In favor.
Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
Favor.
And I'm And I am also in favor. Aaron, did you have some conditions?
I do. Attorney Rose, we have conditions posted here on staff report dated. Do, 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 excuse me for one second, uh, January ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, s- uh, proposed conditions one through five. You've had a chance to review those?
They're agreeable.
All right, so.
All right. So we'll take a roll call vote on approving, um, the conditions as Aaron referenced in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero four nine. Her vote and seek.
I am in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Attorney Rose, you have your, um, special permit for, uh, twenty twenty-four dash zero four nine.
Thank you very much. See you in a bit.
You. All right, moving along in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero five zero. Tim McNamara, D B A, a holistic health group has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash thirty, meta- thirty. Medical marijuana overlay district. The applicant proposes to operate a medical marijuana treatment center licensed through a host community agreement with the town council. With the purpose of conducting patient dispensary sales. The subject property is located at. One twenty Airport Road, Hyannis, Mass, as shown in Accessors Map two nine four as parcel zero one four. It is located in the industrial I N D zoning district. Um, so sitting on this will be myself, her vote and seek. Uh, Paul, you would like to sit this one out?
No, the next one I want to sit out.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, Paul Pennard, um, Mark Hanson, and Aaron Webb are regular members. Uh, Mr. McNamara, I believe you are, uh. Are taking this.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is, uh, Tim McNamara. I am general counsel for Holistic Health Group. I appreciate the, the board's time this evening on our special permit application. If, uh, if it's convenient, uh, I'd like to, am I able to share a, a PowerPoint with the, with the board here?
Yeah, I think David can help get that, get you access to do that.
Yes, he's also.
Right. So. Are you able to see the screen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, so I, I'd just like to give a little bit of a background on, on the use because it's new to the town. Uh, and the board hasn't seen this, um, in, in its, uh, before, yeah. Uh, so, um, I'd like to provide a little bit of context if, uh, if possible. And then get into some of the details, which I can, you know, as far as the drawings are concerned, we can. Uh, pull those up in greater detail as may be necessary. Uh, what, what you see here is, uh, just the front elevation. Um, this, uh, subject property is, uh. Formerly the Barbians Restaurant at one twenty Airport Road. It is adjacent to Cape Cod Works as well as. Uh, Cape Cod Healthcare, uh, a patient facility, uh, that's on the corner of Addicts and Airport. Um, so in, uh, the presentation today, I'd just like to give a little bit of a background on the company. Uh, that is the applicant, um, and just as a correction on the findings. Um, it's not a D B A, it's actually a corporation, so that would need to be clarified in, uh, any, any writings subsequent. Uh, so getting into that, uh, after that, we were talking about the, the zoning considerations, the locus itself, the site plan. The operation and how that would work. Um, distinctions about patient sales versus adult use, which I know is, uh, is usually a. Unclear topic for many, and then talking about security a little bit. Uh, so this company, Holistic Health Group, that I am, uh, applying on behalf of. And also general counsel and president for, uh, was founded in twenty sixteen under the D P H Medical Program, which, uh, subsequently became. Under the Cannabis Control Commission, when that agency was formed. Uh, when the statute, um, for adult use, uh, was approved, uh, during that, uh, national election. Uh, so this company, uh, we cultivate, uh, which means we grow. We manufacture cannabis products and we sell and distribute. Uh, at this, uh, storefront, uh, all-in-one building. So it's a brand-new building. A state-of-the-art, uh, design for those activities. Uh, all cannabis products are, are tracked, seed to sale. That means it's, you know, we, we use R F tags, uh, for, uh, packages, uh, going all the way from the plant to finished goods. Um, this building is located in, uh, Middle Borough. It's about forty miles from the proposed project. Um, most of the products that would be sold at, uh, one twenty Airport under the, uh, medical dispensary license. Would be sourced from this facility. A little bit more about the company is all Massachusetts resident-owned and, and operated. The mission of the company is to advance cannabis medicine, uh, using sustainable practices. So you'll note if you, uh, as we go through the details. Not only do we focus on medicinal cannabis products for patients in particular. Uh, but we're trying to do so using sustainable practices, uh, including the use of greenhouses, et cetera. Uh, early on in the company's operation, uh, we became known for, uh, a natural product, uh, in the formula-based solvent. That is used in a lot of edibles. Uh, so there's a little bit about the company. Uh, I will probably invite you at the end, but I have invited the Z B A in the past to visit. Uh, if not this facility, another, just to get a sense, uh, how these operations. Uh, if you haven't already visited one. But this is just a floor plan of the facility. Again. Uh, the reason I'm showing this to, to the board, um, is because, uh, as a medical cannabis dispensary. You are required to provide all of, uh, all of your materials from a medical facility, which we have. So there is a vertical requirement, as it's called, so you need to grow, produce. Uh, and sell in order to be, to have a medical license. The project that we're talking about today in Barnstable is only a dispensary. Want to make that clear. There will be no growing, no manufacturing. All of that is being done at Middle Borough. This is simply. Uh, an application for a medical, uh, sales floor for patients only. Um, just to describe that, the, the green areas are cultivation areas. Blue is sort of the manufacturing areas of the building, and then to the far right on the screen is that retail. Uh, spot that you saw at the, uh, in the picture of the former slide. So, uh, this is the overview, uh, zoning-wise of, of the area. Uh, we are in the industrial district within the, uh, medical marijuana overlay district. Um, the property is over five hundred feet from any school, daycare, after-school, or religious institution as required. Uh, in the buffer provision, uh, with the zoning ordinance. Uh, it is in a permitted non-residential building and area, um, with minimal traffic impact. Uh, where it was a restaurant, it is now, um, you know, being changed of a use into a medical dispensary as the proposal. Uh, we do not anticipate, uh, there being much more traffic. We can get into that in a minute. Uh, there is adequate parking, uh, on the site plan we'll see. Loading bay is included if required. Uh, the signage is in place. It does not exceed twelve square feet. We would not change that. Um, site plan review was completed in formal November, and then again, uh, formal, we went through in, uh, December. And, uh, and we are now, uh, of course, applying for a special permit. Uh, there are no, um, areas or no, um, medical dispensaries anywhere nearby. Or at any points east on Cape Cod. Um, and we do believe that this is an important detail because, uh, much of the, uh. The lower Cape, uh, looks to, uh, Hyannis as a shopping hub. A lot of, uh, public transportation centers around the Hyannis area, uh, and that this would, uh. Greatly increase access for patients who, who don't otherwise have a, a, you know, go to other than, at this point, sandwich or mashpee. Uh, the project will go through building code review as required from, uh, the site plan review committee. Uh, as well as updated fire, uh, department, uh, requirements on alarms and suppression as may be needed. Um, and so we are sort of working through the building, uh, permit process. You know, as, as we're able to. Uh, here's the site plan. Um, I hope you're able to see it adequately in this form. Put it in the slides, uh, but the property is obviously on the right side of this. Building, um, no changes are, are being made really to any part of this. Uh, we are just using. Uh, proposing to use the existing lot as is. Uh, there are thirty-seven existing parking spots. Twenty-eight would be required on a. Uh, one spot per two hundred square foot basis. Uh, the floor plan has not been finalized. We are actually looking to cut the square footage, uh, as it appears. Um, and so I think that that requirement would only be reduced if changed at all. Uh, no change to the parking lot is proposed, none to the footprint, no curb cut changes. Again, no signage, no lighting. Uh, the building would be upgraded, uh, just for aesthetics. Uh, primarily on the out, exterior as well as landscaping. Um, you know, with the, again, with the restaurant to retail change, we expect there to be a waste water, uh, reduction overall. The, uh, the main, I guess, change that needs to be, uh, entertained at this point, and, and if you're familiar with, um. The location, which most of us should be, uh, the entrance here of Barbians will be maintained as the primary entrance, uh, for. The dispensary, uh, but inside, we will need to create a, uh, a vestibule of sorts, uh, otherwise called a mantrap in the business. Uh, so that, uh, nobody enters or is able to even, uh, view inside this facility. Until they have demonstrated that they have a valid and current, uh, medical registration from the, uh, State Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, and that they have been, uh, deemed, uh, to have a qualifying condition. Uh, to qualify for that card and have gone through the process, which we can. Visit it a little more detail later on. Uh, suffice it to say, unlike a liquor store or even a C V S where, um. Arguably harder or more dangerous products may be found. There are no children that are, and permitted to be anywhere inside of this building ever at all. No visibility inside from the exterior, which results in fogged or shading windows. Uh, nothing crazy, but, uh, again, we're trying to limit any visibility. Only patients, and you would not expect any odor or noise concerns. This is really just a retail store like any other. No consumption would ever be, uh, allowed on premises. Uh, if that's not obvious, it's, uh. Reason for forfeiture of licensure, so, uh, that's taken very seriously in the industry. Um, so what we have here is just a little bit of a view inside. These are existing conditions. Um, of the, of the building as it stands. Um, can you see my cursor kind of going around a little bit? Are you guys able to see that? Okay.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is, uh, the existing entrance with the, uh, the ramp that comes from the parking lot that is closest to, uh. Airport Road. The entrance is here. Um, again, this area would be transformed into a mantrap of sorts. If you come in and take a left, there is a, an existing bar area. We're planning to actually close this off. Uh, maintain it for, uh, employee, uh, break room area. The, uh, most of the, uh, floor plan and the main dining room is going to be used, uh, as simply a point of sale. So we would have a counter running this way and that way under the current plan. The, the kitchen, uh, will be converted to a secure vault space. Uh, so this is where, um, storage of all, uh, cannabis inventory, uh, would be, uh, affected. Uh, and there is, uh. You, you do require, you know, a, a, a larger amount of inventory, but this is, uh, this more than meets our needs. The benefit of it being that, uh. There is a loading dock, uh, right, right here. Um, so there's secure, uh, delivery point. And then again, uh, the synergy of being behind the point-of-sale counter. Uh, just lends itself to being a very sort of efficient and secure means of storage and fulfillment for orders. I'm going forward. So a little bit of what I have listed here, um. All areas that, um, that are not the sales floor are considered limited access areas, which means that anybody. In these backrooms or behind the counter, or, or in any other area but the sales floor, would need to be registered agents. Uh, would need to be employees of the company. Either that, or if it's a contractor or an electrician, they'd need to be, you know, escorted around, signed in as a visitor. Uh, all agents that are employees do need to go through a corey background check that needs to be, uh, updated every year. Uh, so there, there is a lot of, uh, vetting that goes into even, uh, the entry-level employees that, that would be employed here. Again, uh, this, the inventory tracking is, um, probably one of the largest pain points in the industry, but, um. I suppose it can be a comfort, uh, to, especially to view, uh, jurisdiction. Uh, again, the. The, the material is, is tracked all the way until sale, so there really can't be any loss and, and, or diversion, as it's called. Uh, and the state has direct access to all of, um, this software called metric. Uh, so, you know, any questions about that, happy answer. Surveillance again is probably, uh, over and above anything that, uh, it is, over and above anything that the, you know, the police department. Uh, has in the town of Barnstable, uh, and any other business. We have, uh, plenary coverage, which is not, uh. You know, it's not an exaggeration of the fact that like if you have. Uh, a camera in a corner of the room that misses, uh, a square foot. On, on the other side of the room, then you would need another camera if, if there was an obstruction. So there, there is no areas that, that can, uh, have, uh, an absence of camera coverage. Beyond that, there is a ninety-day storage requirement for all of these, uh, camera, uh, surveillance, uh, installation points. So again, um, you know. You, you have ninety days to identify any incident of diversion, which you ostensibly would have re- revealed within. You know, twelve hours because of your metrics seed to sell or tracking software. We, again, you know, tried to engineer early on here, not that we've done any work, uh, at all, uh, but in, in, in going through the motions here. Uh, trying to create the best, uh, patient experience possible. Uh, traffic expectation, you know, unfortunately or fortunately. The, the medical market is suffering. I'll just, I guess, be blunt about it, uh, with the, uh, introduction of adult use. Uh, more people have, uh, foregone getting, uh, medical cards, so. Uh, we are actually seeing fewer patients, but we're also seeing fewer, uh, medical dispensaries. Uh, that's not, you know, the business model of, of my company. Uh, we're actually very active in helping people get certified. Uh, but, uh, just to, I gue- I guess as an introductory business to the area, it's, we don't really expect much in the way of. Traffic. Again, this would be the only medical dispensary from, uh, from here to Province Town. Uh, just a little bit about medical versus adult use. Um, so. You've got to identify a qualifying condition. Uh, you know, the, 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 the bar is pretty low, I could say, uh, pain relief, insomnia qualify. A lot of patients do come in for, uh, sleep, uh, relief. Um, anything else as an alternative is usually too heavy-handed for, for most people, and cannabis has been. Uh, very, very popular for that. Uh, but you do need to get a, a recommendation from an authorized doctor or nurse practitioner to apply for that state card. Uh, and you would, uh, you would go through the motions to do that. It can happen relatively quickly. Uh, medical products are different from adult use. Uh, really, they're not different from adult-use products. Except that in certain instances, medical products may have higher dosages, in particular in an edible form. So, uh, that would be, that five milligrams, uh, is the limit for an adult-use, uh, gummy. Uh, whereas there is no limit for a patient, uh, dose, uh, so patients are eligible just to, to have a much higher, uh. Potency in their products because they're dealing with, uh, in some cases, you know, very debilitating diseases that cannabis can help with. Uh, the other main difference that inspires people to get their patient cards is that there are no taxes collected. Uh, so as a medical product, uh, these, you know, these, uh. Consumers who are patients are not obligated to pay, uh, tax of that, whereas adult use is, uh, twenty percent. As far as patient need, we kind of spoke of the geographical disparity, uh, the, the rights, uh, this. Uh, this comes from the Cannabis Control Commission. Find a retailer website, as you can see, um, from Sandwich and Mashpee all the way to Province Town, there really isn't any. Uh, this is probably one of the, the largest gaps in, uh, coverage, uh, in the state at the moment. Um, so I think that's significant. Uh, I, I bring up. As well, sorry, I'm hearing a bit of an echo. Uh, I bring up age as well because, uh, we see, uh, if you look at, um, take this study for, uh. Just an example. This is from the International Cannabis. Forget which study it is, but I do have to wait for it. Uh, this was, uh, uh, an analysis of about four, forty-five hundred patients in Massachusetts. Um, and the response. Um, and the respondents were the numbers that you see at the top, uh, in those age demographics. And if you'll notice, the trend is largely towards the, uh, later ages. Where, you know, nine hundred fifty-nine of the respondents, uh, were aged fifty-six to sixty-five. They didn't even record, you know, people beyond that age, uh, but, uh, suffice it to say, you're finding that a much larger portion of elderly people, um, you know, or older aging, once they sort of get over the hurdle of, you know, this, that ninety year stigma of cannabis are really adopting it, uh, quite readily, uh, in many instances. Again, sleep is probably the number one, if not pain relief. Uh, Barnstable, as we all know, is the oldest county in the state. Um, and, uh, that means that Barnstable really should have a representation, Barnstable County, of course. Uh, but Barnstable really should have good representation in terms of medical cannabis where, uh, this has been approved by the state and really we do need access. Um, so that's kind of what I'm showing you there. The census data shows you median age of counties. DCC website is the source for that and, uh, I'll have to get you a link for that study if anybody has interest. Um, concerning security, which is usually, uh, a very, um, interesting issue for municipalities. Um, we have perimeter alarms, uh, with a hundred percent surveillance coverage, as, as I noted, uh, ninety day storage. Uh, the state audits are standard operating procedures, uh, every year, uh, but all the way, all the way in, of course, in an application. Uh, that includes weekly inventory audits, monthly internal security audits, and then annually we have to hire a third party security company that we have not engaged for any other purpose. In other words, they're not our alarm company. But some other third party security company comes in to identify, uh, any security gaps. All cannabis material is, uh, in locked containers at all times, under permanent surveillance. If, again, if there's a camera that is not catching an area where cannabis is, that's a deficiency. Uh, and we would need to add another camera if not, uh, you know, respond with a plan of correction. Uh, waste as well needs to be locked up, which, you know, again, another pain point for the industry. Um, I'm not going to get into it, but if you drop a little bit of, uh, grounds on the, on the ground, you, you can't just throw it away in an ordinary waste container. Uh, you have to put it in a lockable container and then put it in a lockable dumpster for your licensed waste processor to pick up. Uh, you know, pursuant to that contract. Not really a big deal in a retail facility as much as it is, uh, in a production facility. Uh, but still, it's very strict. Uh, again, no cannabis is visible from any public location, uh, there's not, you know, really not going to be, you know, anybody's gonna be able to drive by and see there's a sale or, or anything like that. There's no pictures of product that should be displayed. Um, and all cannabis is transported by secure and nondescript licensed transporters. Uh, that use the same metric software that I was talking about that, uh, tracks the inventory from seed to sale. And, uh, it requires really two agents, uh, to be transporting and there is a a weight, an account that takes place at origin and destination to ensure that no quote unquote diversion is taking place. Cash transport is an important subject because, uh, of restrictions that still remain federally. Uh, these companies, uh, really can't do banking with traditional banks. Um, that doesn't mean we don't have banking. We actually can work with a, a number i- in the state. Uh, the one we work with presently is Needham Bank, uh, but those are ones including Bank Five, Eastern Bank, Northern Bank. Uh, Gardner Federal Credit Union are just a, a couple in the state that we can do business with. But cash does need to be transported frequently, uh, and so, you know, that, that would occur based on your deposit needs. Uh, with a licensed transporter that would arrive, uh, pick up the bags and transport them to the destination bank. In our case, Needham, where the deposit is, uh, to take place at, uh, Medford. That's how that works. Uh, again, all staff must pass a Corey check prior to agent registration. Uh, we, uh, are in contact with the Barnstable Police Department. Last week, uh, this is a picture of, uh, Lieutenant Detective Cunningham and Kelsey came by. This is a, an image of our tissue culture lab. Uh, this is where we, uh, generate, uh, plants. Uh, you can see them in the cups. They're called microplants. Uh, it's a very scientific, clean technique. Uh, in any case, uh, they had the opportunity to come by and, uh, observe firsthand. You know, how we s- how we, uh, store our, uh, surveillance, where cameras are featured and how access controls were. Uh, and so I think it was a useful experience for them. And we agreed to, uh, continue to, uh, be in communication with them, um, along the lines of, you know, how, how much progress we can make, uh, and providing them, you know, updates with, you know, more precise data about uh, what, what we have, uh, for security, uh, as well as in the, in the event of, uh, an incident, uh, so for example, if there is diversion discovered, if we do discover that material goes missing. Uh, that is a mandated require, uh, uh, mandated reporting requirement. That we would need to notify the police within twenty-four hours of the discovery. Uh, and of course, the police would be interested in seeing surveillance footage so we could provide them with a hub drive with the relevant footage. Uh, and, uh, you know, if, if it was an employee, uh, we would obviously take action with the employee and the police department would, would have to decide. Uh, if it was to get involved. Um, as, yeah, so H H G is going to provide a floor plan, security updates as the building develops. Police, again, I can reiterate that, uh, to the extent anybody on the board, uh, or on the call is interested. Uh, you know, happy to, uh, to host, uh, a floor just to get a better feel. I find that, uh, contextually it's difficult, uh, to, to describe all that's taking place. This is a picture of, uh, our greenhouse, uh, where the plants are growing. This is cannabis. If you haven't seen the plant before. Uh, but, uh, things are looking good in this instance at least. Um, so in conclusion, you know, uh, obviously we were, you know, uh, just hoping that the board, uh, could, based on the foregoing evidence, find that the, uh, that the proposal complies with section two forty dash thirty and it's located with an area that not have reasonable access to medical cannabis. Find safe and secure access and egress for all patients and employees for all forms of transportation. Fills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Uh, and while subject to, uh, reaching a host community agreement with the town council, uh, would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good of the neighborhood affected. Uh, so I appreciate the board's attention.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Uh, do you mind just unsharing the screen, Mr. McNamara, so I can see everyone? Thank you.
There you go.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, on, um, uh, the, uh, regulations for two forty, thirty E four. Um, that you have to be five hundred feet from the nearest, uh, institution or, uh, place where children may congregate. And isn't there a fitness center right next door?
I believe there's a Cape Cod healthcare facility, a fitness center, and a Zion's church and court all in the surrounding area. I'm not sure the distances, but surrounding.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, especially because I think.
I didn't see that included with distances to, um, different facilities and other.
Yeah, it's supposed to be five hundred feet. It says five hundred feet anyway, uh, to the nearest, um, entrance. So, uh, just that. I don't know if it's been measured or checked. That's just a question.
I could speak to that, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I appreciate the question. We actually, um, had to change the, uh, the ordinance because of, uh, some of the, uh, unclarity with it, um, with respect to, um, that definition, which as you highlighted is, uh, somewhat problematic as to what qualifies as an area where children commonly congregate. Um, but suffice it to say, um, that prior to the zoning ch- uh, ordinance change, there was absolutely no, uh, area within this overlay district that was eligible for cannabis facility because it was a thousand feet. Um, and the religious institution of the Zion church was, uh, buffer. The new ordinance, um, identifies that it, the measurement shall take place from door to door. Unless there is an impermissible barrier. Um, so, you know, again, uh, you'd have to look at what an impermissible barrier is. But if you draw a straight line from the front door of Barbians to, say, the fitness club, I think you'll find that you're going through a building to get there. And so in that instance where you have an impermissible barrier, you're asked to take, uh, the common street ways. I, I forget what the definition says exactly. But essentially, get on the road, uh, and try to travel to the destination in question and use that one as your measurement.
Right, yeah, the, I think they call it the pedestrian travel path.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay. So you, so you believe you, you are not within five hundred feet is what you're saying, right?
Right, right, yeah, sorry.
So just to follow that, to that, um, Mr. McNamara. So in the event that someone wanted to use one of those properties for, say, a daycare in the future, after you guys are in occupancy, what's the process? Would they be restricted from that use there?
Yeah, they would. I would think they would.
Well, I don't have a good answer for that, um. I, I don't know that they'd be restricted. I just don't know that the special permit would be validated on that basis. I, I don't really, I, I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, and, and honestly, that, um, the ordinance was written from, uh, a twenty, twenty-twelve, uh, import. Um, and the, again, the language was so problematic in places like Boston that they just took it out entirely, um, you know, prior to, you know, prior to Barnstable modifying it. But Barnstable had, had included it. But, you know, the idea that children commonly congregating, like, I mean, where, where do, where do kids congregate? When I was a kid in Barnstable, I was congregating in many places, you know, but, uh, um, you know, I think the, the, the church was really the focus, uh, for most people when the ordinance, uh, change came about. Um, the fitness club, I did look into that, but there wasn't really any, uh, any children, uh, at least on the, yeah, I, I wasn't, I, it would identify any sort of after school, anything going on there, but.
Okay. Um, anyone else have any questions? I've got a few here. What, but I'll, anyone else go first?
I, I have one, Ja- Jake. The, the regularly, the, the subsection F of the, the, the ordinance talks about a security plan being submitted to the chief of police who will provide comments to the board. It anticipates that happening, I guess, before or in conjunction with this hearing. I know that in the, uh, the, the, the site plan review, there was a comment indicating that you would be providing a, a, uh, security plan to the, uh, Barnstable Police Department. I, I was wondering if you could speak to that. I mean, the, the timing of this. On the one hand, the regulation seems to require this board to review the, 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 um, the security plan with comments from the chief of police. Um, but it seems like that's going to be done after a decision is made on this special permit.
Yeah, there, yeah, sorry to interrupt. There's a lot of, uh, chicken and egg type of, uh, problems with the ordinance, uh, that I have identified. For example, we would normally have gone through a host community agreement process already before coming to this board. Um, but, you know, I, what I had said to, you know, and, and I don't think it would normally be reviewed by the Z B A, uh, in a public forum at least. But, you know, as far as what a security plan is comprised of, I kind of laid it out in terms of what the statute requires, um, as to the specific details of, you know, where, uh, our keys or where are, what, what codes would be involved or where the camera locations are going to be. Um, you know, there's, I guess, a level of detail that we probably wouldn't want to share on a, in a public forum.
Um, I, I, I think it's, sorry to interrupt you, but it, 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 the way I read it is you submit it to the police department and the board gets a comment from the chief of police as to adequacy or inadequacy without getting into the details you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff seems to speak to, sorry.
Sure, yeah, and, and, you know, I, I guess I was directed to act with, um, you know, Detective Kelsey, uh, who in turn brought his lieutenant to the facility and, uh, in ordinarily in municipalities, you know, the chief doesn't actually get involved. But I suppose that if the, if the, if the board wants the chief to speak to the security plan, uh, that's, you know, more than.
I, it's not the board's wish. I'm reading directly from the ordinance.
No, I, I got you. I, I think that if, you know, if we, you know, I think that the, the board deserves under the ordinance to receive comment from the chief as to, you know, the, uh, adequacy of the security plan.
I, 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 I guess, I guess this is more a comment for the board, but the, 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 uh, site plan review letter says that you will submit the plan.
Yeah, I agree with you, man. That was one of my concerns here. I mean, it is a chicken egg situation here because we're also, you know, two forty, one twenty-five C says that the site plan review letter has to have everything cleared up except for this. And the letter that Brian's written has conditions on it, including that police plan. So I don't think we even can, we can't approve, I, we cannot, I don't see that we can approve this today. Um, with those outstanding items until they're resolved. I, 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 I don't, it's again a chicken and egg thing.
I wouldn't ask the board to approve it today. I mean, I, I think it's a, a definitely inadequate condition. Um, you know, for, you know, to submit a security plan that's sufficient as to the, you know, that the chief of police has spoken to. Uh, but, you know, we are, we can only do so much in terms of modifying the building or, or assessing where, you know. The security plan is what I've submitted as to like the security layout and the security blueprints, uh, and the drawings that are associated with it, that would necessarily take place after or during a building.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's just the condition, our approval process that says that we have this letter from the chief of police. I, I mean, again, this is the first time we're dealing with this, this special permit, um, ordinance, so we're just, you know, checking off our boxes, looking at the list here.
The chairman, Paul, um, might I suggest that, uh, to satisfy, to give time to satisfy that partic- this particular requirement that we continue this to the next meeting? Um, w- w- hoping that we can get something.
I think we've got other items we should cover at the same time, so we can maybe come back and get it done in one meeting. Um, do other people have comments? Or questions? Go ahead, Aaron.
Cause I'm not necessar- really concerned about security, um, at this point. I mean, it's, these things are like, like getting into a bank vault. I mean, it is, it's, um, and I trust these, that this will be a piece of it. I'm more concerned with the size of the building. Barbians is a gigantic space for a retail space of a couple hundred square feet. I guess retail, forgive, forgive me when I say retail, but a customer type medical, um, li- you know, it's, I just worry, I mean, it's a gigantic building with no production happening there, solely just distribution. Um, you know, what's gonna, what is the rest of that space gonna become, right? There's, isn't there upstairs of Barbians? There's multiple dining rooms. I mean, you talked about it being created for staff and the kitchen going for the, you know, becoming the vault, so to speak, but man. It's, I guess it's really not my, you know, thing, but are we gonna have security everywhere around that entire property, upstairs, downstairs, basement? I mean, it's a big space. For how much retail space do you actually, you know, and again, forgive me when I say retail, but customer space do you actually plan here?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so, some of that actually, you know, it, it gets into some of our, uh, building plans, but, um, you know, the, the mezzanine, for example, that the second floor of Barbians is, is a part of the operation that we uh, don't necessarily need and we're exploring, you know, taking that out in order to open up the, the floor space a little bit. I can't really speak to that right now because the engineer hasn't, you know, examined it in enough detail. Um, but, you know, I, I will note that the assessor's card, you know, shows something around twelve thousand square feet. That is so, very inaccurate, uh, you know, the, the, the actual square footage in there is, I can't, I can't even find five thousand square feet if you account all square footage on all floors. Uh, so, you know, the, the, the floor plan will be an open one, uh, and it will be used for, uh, displays. But there's also a requirement for, uh, a patient consult room. So that will take a portion of the floor space and, and this is just used as an area for, you know, patient privacy if they want to talk about their condition. Uh, and use, you know, a, a little bit of discretion with a bartender or one of the customer service representatives to speak to that. And, um, you know, the kitchen is, is a larger, uh, vault area. Uh, but, you know, I, I, I guess it could be considered a little oversized, but tending to have more space um, is, is also something that people are gonna be, you know, a little more. um, is is also something that people are gonna be, you know, a little more comfortable walking around in a little bit. So.
So again, going back, but you do you do plan the security. I mean, every square foot of that place will be overlaid coverage with security cameras. I mean, break rooms, you name it. Everything is
Yeah.
exterior perimeter, all that.
Right, the the place will not get licensed until that is satisfied. And and that honestly, that's partially why we feel we don't need that mezzanine on the second floor, because that's just, you know, twice as many cameras essentially where we could really uh probably just, you know, just just use that first floor.
Uh, I've got a couple of questions um here, hope we give clarity. So which which parking calculation did you use for what's gonna remain parking lot area?
Uh, as to the off-street parking ordinance?
Yeah.
Um, for retail?
You use just the town's retail, basically?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Because there's, I think there's a provision in here sort of regulating it within the this overlay.
Oh, but uh.
It's more or less, actually, I don't know if it's more or less. I didn't calculate it out, but I was just curious. Um, yeah, it says number parking place, parking both long and short term, it shall be one space for every two hundred square feet of gross floor area. And again, back to Aaron's point, you've got a lot of gross floor area in the building, even though we're not sure using all of it.
Right, and so the calculation was based on existing floor space and it was the same calculation, one one per two hundred square.
Okay.
I think we estimated there's actually about forty-six hundred square feet. The basement is not a part of the lease. Um, so that's not even really finished space. Um, so it is really, what's in question is the main dining room, the kitchen, um, the lounge area and the mezzanine, uh, and the assessor's card makes some statement about a third quarter story, but it's really part of the mezzanine. There's a a step up. There's a little bit of an office area there, um, so.
Okay. I just, I think, I just want to make clarification of what the parking expectations are, how it's being calculated. Um, and then, so loading and unloading, you're not proposing a loading bay?
Uh, there's an ex- There's an existing loading bay there, uh, that's, we would just use, we're proposing to use the same loading bay that's in existence.
Um, and then signage, was there proposed signage? I didn't see it in the elevations.
No, there was no uh proposed signage. Uh, I guess, you know, we would seek permitting. I mean, the the existing sign is you know, what we would use, uh, or what we would propose to use. But other than that, there, you know, we don't have a sign proposed at this stage.
Okay, just because again, it's just, it's it's called out in the ordinance, and so I just want to make sure it's gonna comply.
Yeah.
In in the ordinance. Um, and where were that planned hours of operation?
Uh, I think nine to nine, nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday.
Again, just for board members, these are things we have discretion to restrict if how we want to based on the ordinance. That was just sort of why I was asking. Um, and then, in terms of access, the ordinance is very specific to access. Currently, there's no sidewalks on either of those roads there. Are you guys proposing to add sidewalks or add access? Improve roadway to public transit or other locations?
That is not, that's not part of the proposal, no.
How would you propose that pedestrians access it?
Like, I guess the way that pedestrians access um, anything, I I don't know how we can get pedestrians, you know, to that area that's been designated industrial.
I mean, the way I read the ordinance, it's very specific that pedestrian travel is going to increase based on this use. And that's why the ordinance is calling out for pedestrian, say pedestrian access. So I would say the ordinance is calling out for some sort of sidewalk in the area or some sort of public transit access, you know, I I again, I just don't see it on the plan.
Yeah, well, um, I mean, the zone is probably bad. I mean, as we we could certainly propose putting a sidewalk in, I I just I'm not sure what the location, wh- where, like, where would we put it to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I again, I don't know. I'm just reading, this is our first time tackling this ordinance, and I'm just reading what what our town council put forward as requirements for these things. You know, it's again, it's like a chicken and the egg thing. They want it back in the industrial park hidden, but they want it close to public transit because they're anticipating that the people that are gonna want to access this may need access to public transit, bikes and pedestrian access.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I do know that I do know that Cape Cod RTA, you know, goes by the location. Um, so I mean, public transport is, you know, certainly part of the existing scheme. Um, whether I can propose that they put a bus stop there or something, I'm not sure that that's within my purview. Um, or our purview as a, you know, simply pretty good project, but. Um.
I think at least if you can highlight the proximity to it, you know, it as part of your, you know, package that, you know, this is is our proposed, you know, this is how some people will access it, and you know, it's a short walk on a safe road or you know, there's a shoulder there. I don't, I I didn't sort of check the whole roadway, but I know that is sort of a narrow area for for walking on the road or biking on the road. Uh, um, and I don't know if we have any planned road improvements in that area, if DPW is working on anything in in that area, but um, again, just just a concern that is raised in this, the way the ordinance was written.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yep.
During Mr. McNamara's presentation, he talked about the parking being exceeding what was required. I think significantly by maybe fifteen spots, and forgive me if I confuse my language, but again, maybe, maybe uh, Mr. McNamara creating a area within, on the property, the lot, either it be a turnaround, uh, you know, a a ro- uh, not an I, a rotary, but a a small circular area where potentially public transportation could draw somebody, wait. Um, because there didn't appear to be any, you know, sort of improvements that you're proposing to the current structure of what was a restaurant to what now is gonna become a retail with ordinances that we have to now, you know, um, follow. So again, there didn't seem to be much site plan, um, improvement in the exterior where it does appear to me like you do have space to do that. So maybe that's just a, you know, it would would present to us a uh updated, you know, improvement to the lot. Um, pertaining to some of these issues that the chairman's bringing up. Just a thought.
Yeah, and Aaron, as a follow-up to that, yeah, Mr. McNamara, I don't, I again, I'm not gonna make you hire a a professional landscaper, but I think some sort of landscaping plan that just shows what the buffers are. Again, because the ordinance calls out for what the separation visual, et cetera, from from your butters is, so it would just be helpful if there was a little bit more sort of what the perimeter looked like.
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're 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 happy to provide more detail where possible. I think, um, you know, the buffer spoke to, you know, where where residences might be, um, or obscuring from residential areas that that, you know, there are none there, but, you know, we're I can understand the need for seeing a little more detail, especially if it's related to uh the transportation.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Um, did did this go through site plan review?
Did.
Yes, it did. The letters was was uh attached. It did have a few conditions on it, but that was my concern with two forty-one twenty-five C. Says that everything has to be checked except for our special permit before we could grant it.
Well, the site plan review reviews landscaping, it reviews pl- uh, parking, it re- reviews access, it reviews all that stuff, so.
Not in this special overlay, while while we have discretion in the special overlay.
Well, I understand we have discretion, but I'm just saying the site plan review process also reviews that. I just want that noted, that they passed the left site plan review.
For the underlying zoning, correct. Aaron, go ahead.
So, uh, I'm I'm a little confused about the process here too, and I apologize for my ignorance, but you have been a site plan review, but the host agreement with the town council has not been set forth yet.
Correct.
And so we need a special permit for then, for you guys to then approach town council for the host community agreement.
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay, I apologize, sorry.
Are there any of the board members with questions? Mark, Manny, Natalie? Herb?
Now, I still think the um, police chief needs to have that security plan comments. And I think that's a a big factor right there.
Yeah, I and I again, Mr. McNamara, I don't think it's asking, the way it's written, I don't think it's asking for us to see it, the plan. I think that's between you and him. Him just writing a, you know, two-sentence letter saying that I have a plan that is satisfactory checks that box from what I'm, the way I read it.
Yeah, that's all, again, a a lot of this stuff is still part of state licensing, so we would be, you know, obtaining that, but we can get it earlier, that's fine.
Okay. Um, I mean, that, I mean, I I think, I think the best way forward is we continue it and to come back with some of those sort of items that we've talked about. Uh, one thing, I may reach out to town, the town attorney to ask. I'm just sort of curious about that. What if one of the abutters wants, what if one of those properties wants to build an apartment building or wants to become a daycare or become a, you know, whatever, are they restricted from that or they're at their own peril to put that close to you, or does it jeopardize your special permit or the renewal or the transfer of your special permit in the future? Unless you have someone that can speak to it, but I I would probably just defer to to attorney Conley or or turning over just to get clarity on that for us all.
Yeah, I I mean, I would appreciate if you did reach out. I've been trying to get a hold of the town attorney for a while now, so I think it's time that they start looking into some of the details.
Um, I think in the benefit of, for you and everyone, I think I will open for public comment. We're not gonna close public comment tonight, but I just want to hear any concerns, so maybe you can, we can all resolve them for the next meeting. Um, so I'm gonna open for public comment. Anyone like to speak to this? I see, um, councillor Turkelson has her hand up. If you want to speak, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm just curious how the um upcoming citizens petition for changing the medical marijuana overlay and the can- to a cannabis overlay is gonna impact the permitting of this property.
Mr. McNamara, do you want to speak to that? Because I do not have any.
Uh, well, I mean, that's all, those those processes are usually long and drawn out, um, as to uh rezoning for adult use. I'm sure there's a lot of people in town who'd want to speak to that. Um, I think, uh, what usually has to happen as it did at the state level is that they just have to uh, bring the ordinance, uh, the medical, existing medical ordinance in some sort of congruity with the adult use uh ordinance that's proposed. Uh, and how that can happen is probably a thousand different ways based on thousand different voices. I can't really speak beyond that. Um, so I s- I'm sorry.
I I guess I'm just curious what what the plan is, and I mean, that's is all coming up at the same time, so we have a citizens petition that's gonna be coming forward, and we now have, you know, this in front of the ZBA, so what happens if something is approved by the ZBA and then there's a change in zoning? Will this business have to come back where that just allows them to move into that new zoning where it can be expanded from medical to recreational to growing to cultivating?
Uh, no. The answer to that is no. Um, I mean, there is a, there would be a special permit process independent of this one. Ostensibly, that's, I've had to go through, uh, in Middleborough, I had to go through zoning board special permit process as well as a planning board special permit process. There is no automatic granting at the state or local level of uh one or the other in adult use versus uh, the medical market. Um, and this, the town doesn't need to zone for adult use retail if the town does not want to. Whereas medical is guaranteed by right, um, under the state law.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, councillor Ledke, public comment?
Yes, thank you, Jake. Uh, let me just say, uh, Mr. McNamara, what a wonderful presentation, so detailed. And I was there, uh, at the town council when we passed this, when you came before, I think it was you that came before. And, um, it's really nice to see this progressing. You know, we did, we we do these, um, these zoning overlays and then nothing comes of them. I mean, what comes to mind is the the housing, the multifamily housing at the mall, that there was quite a bit of work on, and then, you know, maybe something will crop up. So this is fantastic, and I really like it. I'm I'm not, um, in support of the adult, um, the citizens petition at all. And I'm even less in support of it now, based on your presentation, seeing the detail and the safeguards that you have in place. I'm very sympathetic to those who uh need the the medical marijuana. It seems to be very valuable. And it's, uh, it's very, this has been fantastic for me, a learning process. As we do things at the town council, we should, we should think of the uh, the the consequences of of what we put into things. You know, be more, uh, maybe aware of the hindrances and and ha- you know, what happens when somebody comes forward to try to do this? So I applaud you for your persistence. I appreciate your professionalism. And also professionalism, the zoning board of appeals, this is something new for them. I think they're doing a great job. I mean, I'm just, I I, you know, those who know me know I'm not usually so complimentary, I, you know. But this is just, um, really good to me. I love the discussion. Everybody's engaged. And I I hope we can work this out because I think it's something that we need. You said there's nothing east of us. And, uh, there's a whole lot of people east. And, you know, Hyannis has become the place to come to. You know, you're pretty close to the Whole Foods, which is quite a draw. You know, the only one on Cape Cod. Um, so that kinda, you know, speaks to, you know, where you are. It's a sweet spot. I think we've got the zone right. I mean, there's so much right about this that, um, I'm glad you're gonna continue it, Jake, and hopefully sort out these details. And, um, I'm just really impressed all around. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, real quick, of of, I'm sorry to interrupt Chair- Chairman, but while town councillors are on the call. Could anyone remind me of the date of the citizens petition, by chance?
That has not been set yet.
Oh, I thought I got a meeting notice that it was, um, scheduled already. Okay, no problem. I'll think, I'll.
Maybe it's coming on the agenda that'll be out on Friday.
Okay, no problem.
Betty might be able to speak to that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, I I did not see it on there. Um, something makes me think it's somewhere else, but, uh, no, it's not coming out on the next agenda. It is not. Um, I I don't, I can't, sorry, Aaron, I, if I could, I would absolutely speak to it, uh.
Of course, no, I appreciate that. I I thought that I, I thought that I read that it was already slated for, and I I had anyway, no problem. I'll I'll offline, I'll figure it out.
I know we're aware of it. I don't know, is it at the planning board for some reason? I don't, I don't know. I it, you know, I should know that answer, but I don't. But I know it's.
Just interrupt for one second. I apologize. We did get some correspondence from the planning board. And, um, on January twenty-seventh at seven PM, the planning board, um, has a zoning amendment for cannabis overlay district. And it again is scheduled for January twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Anna. I knew I saw it somewhere. I appreciate that.
Well, that's it. I think, uh, it, I think what we did is we sent it from the town council to the planning board, because I I think we did see this. That's how we know about it. So, thank you, Anna, thank you.
All right, is there any other public comment? Anyone here to speak to this? We are gonna leave public comment open, so at, when we continue this, there would be additional public comment. We did receive one letter um, from Toby Leary of Cape Cod Gunworks to express his support as an abutter, um, for the po- project as proposed. All right, um, Mr. McNamara, what time, what timeline do you think you want to come back? Is this on your on a hurry up for, or, uh? You need a little time, you think, or?
I guess I'd, I'd like to ask Dave, who's on this call and, uh, is working with us on this. Do you, were you looking for the next available date, Dave, you think?
Dave, just for the record, can you just, um, just state your name and affiliation with the project, just for the record?
Uh, my name is, uh, David Courier, and I'm president of Seaside Cannabis, and I'm just helping Tim right now consulting on this. Um, but I would say that we'd be, um, looking to get the direct questions that you guys have. Um, as I've heard, I've heard a few different, and then, um, I would like to get on, um, Um, as I've heard, I've heard a few different, and then um I would like to get on um sooner than later. Okay, we've been trying to get a hold of town council.
We have February twelfth, which is in-person at Town Hall, and then February twenty-sixth, which is Zoom, and March twelfth, which is in-person at Town Hall.
I'm not afraid of Town Hall, Tim, if you're not.
No, no, I, um, Dave's been in Town Hall a lot of times. Uh, February twelfth, did you say?
Yep.
Yeah, let's, let's go for that, Tim, okay?
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue, appeal number twenty-two-four dash zero-five-zero to February twelfth, twenty-twenty-five at.
Can I just jump in real quick here, I just want to, I just want to, again, guys, that's only a couple of weeks away to have a security plan right, approved by the police chief. You, again, that's.
I think they've already, I think they've already stuffed it with him, he's already seen it, it's a matter of getting him to write the letter, I think.
Well, I would clarify, you know, I, I was interacting with a detective, a lieutenant detective who, who I, I believe were designated for the purpose of handling this. Uh, if we need the chief to speak to it, I, I will do my best to get his input, I guess, by that time. Chief, the chief of police doesn't have to talk to me, you know what I mean, like, so, we don't know which direction it's going to go. Uh, but I will do my best to make sure that we can get input from him to the board by that time, whether it's.
Yeah, it just seems, it seems like that's, that, that, to me, that appears like a lot of work and, and in a short little window there, but if you're what, you know, I don't know where you're at with it, so I, I don't want to just, it does seem like a lot of work, it being the biggest piece at this point in my opinion of what we discussed, you know, so, that's all, sorry.
Tim, I'm just going verbatim off of that, off of the ordinance that just says, chief, whatever it, you know, town council or legal council wrote it that way, that's just what it says. Um, so I'm hopeful they'll at least sign or co-sign a letter from, if it's from Kelsey and then co-sign by the chief or something, would just check that box for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Mister Chair, Mister Chairman, this is Paul, uh, is that continued to an in-person session?
That's, yeah, if it's February twelfth, it would be in person.
Okay, then, then I will not be there.
Okay.
Okay, just so you know, I, I would also like, like, can we list specifically what we're looking for, for that continuance? We, we've raised a lot of questions, what specifically are we looking for?
Yeah, that's what Dave asked for.
Uh, I can. Tim, do you feel like you have a list, do you want to summarize it, we can let you know if there's anything missing, or do you want me to go for it?
Uh, sure, I, well, so, uh, we wanted security plan, uh assurances from the chief of police. Um, is that the, I, I will look to the, you know, to the ordinance to make sure that we're at least meeting.
Yeah, the ordinance just asked for a letter from him, saying that he, it's satisfactory to him.
All right.
Mister Chairman, I, I, I think there's one other thing that might take some time, when you're talking about pedestrian access. You know, that probably might need to go through engineering, everything, you know, so I think February twelfth is pretty aggressive for that.
I mean, again, I, I'm going to leave it to the applicant to decide how they want to come back to check that box for us. Um, you know, we had a discussion about possibly it's, it's identifying the nearest bus stop and what the access from that bus stop is, et cetera, or maybe we even, you know, as, as I think maybe Aaron or someone suggested, maybe there's Uber waiting spots or public transit waiting spots or, or something of that nature that, that sort of check that box. But I would leave it to the applicant to, to persuade us that he's checked that box in some way, shape or form.
Um, Mister Chairman, we, it's probably also worth mentioning since uh there isn't counsel necessarily here that um we have those new rules regarding, you know, a late um, a, a late continuance, if we get to that point, you know, just before that meeting. You are required to, you know, give certain amount of notice and otherwise you do need to appear in order to notice, uh, in order to continue, so. Worth, worth looking at the rules.
Going by memory, I think they can, you want relatively close to it, it's the second continuance, I think, that gets them.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Paul.
Can, can we complete the list first and before we decide this other stuff, there's two things on there that I understand right now, okay? One is a letter from the chief of police on security, the second one has to do with parking, uh, excuse me, with pedestrians. Is there, are there any other items?
I guess what that suggests is the applicant should just go down the requirements of the ordinance and, and, and see how it, it proposes to comply with each item.
Right. That's the easiest.
Is that helpful, Tim, or is that lead you with direction?
We will do our best, yes, uh, I will relook at it, I think that the other thing on here that was called out was a signage proposal. Uh, and so, you know, I, I think we've been pretty comprehensive. Uh, we will, we'll take another shot at it and try to be even more comprehensive. At this stage, I guess, is really the, you know, we're, we're trying to, there's many, 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 many stages and, and there, you know, there's some at the town level and there are some at the state level and, and we're just trying to check the boxes as we go, so I appreciate everyone's patience.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Manny, a lot of those are sort of discretionary on our side to, to sort of let go or, or, or hold to, so it's just a matter of, that's why I think the question was, what are we, what are we hoping to see? And to express that, and I, I think we've, we've shared it, but if, Paul, you want more clarity of where we are, we can try to identify them.
We want to go through the whole list again in the next meeting, I mean, I haven't seen the list, I don't know how long it is, but there's two specific things so far. Is there any other specific thing that any of the members want answers to prior to um considering approval or disapproval?
I think, Tim, if you could just clarify those parking calculations, just where, where they're coming from, just so it's on, it's just stated. I'm not worried about it, but just because your gross floor area is very big, which triggers one parking calculation um versus the retail. Um, and then hours of operation, I think it's just important, just so we know, again, just to have it for the record, that this is what it is and we can notify, you know, the public that that's what, how this place is going to operate. Maybe to Natalie's point, if you can just draw the dis, just, you know, you can use GIS or whatever and draw the distance, how calculated to Zion's Church and to Court and to, just so we can just see it, again, just for the record.
Yeah, I, I apologize, that was in my filings, but I do have that, I, I have those.
Okay.
Those distances.
Um, and then I just would like a little more landscape fencing and, and that kind, if there's any plans.
Landscaping, yeah.
Yeah, the landscape.
And again, not necessarily, you know, what's before us, but I would love to see some more detail about what's going to happen inside. So, that's, you know, again, if I, if, 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 if I had, my brothers, I'd love to see what the, how that, you know, um what do you call that man cave-like area where you got to check with the license once, license twice, get buzzed into the door, you know, what that's kind of, kind of looked like and the rest of the space is going to kind of look like, again, I don't want to, the.
No, 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 I, I appreciate that, and I really, I, I can't stress enough how, how contextual, like, observing of, of an existing facility might, yes, of assistance. I invited the board to Middleborough, uh, Dave manages uh Seaside Cannabis in Orleans, it's a little closer to you guys. Uh, I could certainly forward his contact information, you could see an actual facility with an actual man trap. Or if, if there's interest in visiting the site itself, I mean, I, I can see there's a lot of questions here uh that maybe we want to go to one-twenty Airport Road and, you know, if, if that's something that anybody on the board is interested in doing, we are happy to walk you through and, and show you some of the planning uh that we're doing. We just really can't, um, yeah, we, yeah, it's, it's tough to do stuff once, you know, without demoing, you know what I mean, it's tough to really figure out what you can do, so, uh, but yeah.
I think Aaron's concern is just that it's a really big space and how is it going to be used for a low-impact facility, you know, or is there going to end up being more expansion or more there than, than what we approve kind of thing?
Yeah, and again, again, uh, Mister Chair, you know, Orleans is a great example of, of, of how you can make use of uh expanded floor space. Uh, especially because for many people, this is like a brand-new thing. And it takes time for them to sort of absorb all of the, like, I, this has been ten years for me, right? So I, I am full of information that I could, I could go for hours just explaining to you the, how, how edible works, you know? It takes a long time for people to really understand the nature of this product, what to look for in the product in terms of cannabinoid content, what are terpenes? What are the effects, what, what could you expect, you know, in terms of onset? What are your dosages, you know, people are different, what is your metabolism, you know? There's a lot to get through and, and I think when, when people have a space with educational materials like what they've done in Orleans or what we've done in Orleans, uh, it, it is, is really illustrative, I mean, you can't really explain how you're going to lay out a store without really showing how the store is laid out, you know, and uh it's, I, I can't, I, again, I can't speak enough about just being, uh, having that personal experience. I would just reiterate, uh, Aaron, if, if you have my email, uh, if you have any interest, please reach out.
I certainly will, again, full disclosure, I, I've been in the man trap in multiple different locations, up and down Cape Cod and, and all over the bridge. And, you know, you see them, they come in all sizes, right, like everything else, there's no, one box fits perfectly, Be Well is tiny. You know, uh, the Salty Farm are tiny, you know, there's just, there's no space there, you know? Where then I think of Barbie Anne and I'm like, holy smokes, again, gigantic space, so. Not, not, not worried about it, it's not really what we're asked to, to review, I just, again, you know, I just, I, it does lead me to, to question, that's all, that's all, that's all I'm getting at.
Sure.
Can I, oh, sorry.
No, I, I, I think, Aaron, we, we were thinking the same thing when we first got in there and then realized, like, it actually works pretty well if, if our plans go through, but, no, I, I can appreciate where you're coming from, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
And, and, and Tim, you did, you did mention real quick too, that the, the basement was not part of the lease, right? So, is the, the, the property owner, is that, is he going to be using that space, or we don't know that, again, right? But it, you know, in this particular instance, when there is this, you know, oversight of this particular retail product and, and, you know, I am curious about what is going to be happening in the basement, if somebody's going to be using it, you know, or what the, you know, again, everything is going on, so it's just one more piece that I'm curious about.
Yeah, yeah, the basement's uh in great condition and there's no access from inside the building down there. Um, it's really used for dry food storage, I, I don't think it's really, like, or it was, uh, under Barbie Anne's, I don't think anybody really wants to do anything with it, it's more of a crawl space than anything else, yeah.
But to, Tim, to that lease point, the, the whole lot is part of the lease, right, like, you guys aren't just using part of it?
True, yeah, that's true, I, we just haven't.
I just, I just want to clarify that, just while, seeing it came up.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, to Aaron's point, it's a big building, it's a beast, pretty big lot too, and I guess that's where I sort of defer to, like, seeing some sort of landscaping. Like, I don't think we want park benches or anything like that there, we probably want more landscaping to create less places for people to congregate and hang out and and things of that nature, I think, is, is the intention of the ordinance of, of looking at some of that stuff.
Gotcha.
Um, so where did we get to with, or Mark, you had a comment, go ahead.
No, actually, uh, Aaron kind of hit it on the head that, you know, if there was leasable space, I wasn't sure if the whole um, if the whole building was being leased or it, you know, whether that was a habitable type space in the basement, I've, I've never been down there. So that was just a question, or, or how that gets protected from the outside, you know, that kind of thing, so, yeah, he answered that question.
I, I don't think it would be unreasonable that we condition it that the property is only leased in the entirety. Just from like all the safety concern and stuff, I, I don't, I don't think you would want a two-tenant property happening.
So, would that, would that preclude, would that preclude owner use for that space?
I think so.
No, I, I, I gotta interject here, guys, like, no, nobody wants to go in that basement, like, there's just, everybody wants to stay out of that basement, it's going to be locked up. Nobody, you know, the owner doesn't want it for his use, I, I just, I'm just saying, like, we, whatever we negotiated had really nothing to do with the basement, is what I'm saying.
Um, so where did we land, are we going to go for February twelfth, in person?
Yeah, that's what we decided.
And Anna, remind us, what is the date that he would need to um submit additional materials by for that meeting?
Uh, generally, it's a week ahead.
Okay. So that's going to put you the first couple of days of February. And then if he wanted to ask for a continuance, ideally, it's more than forty-eight hours before, I think, is how we have it.
Yes.
So a week ahead would be like the fifth, I guess. February, right?
No, the meeting's on the fifth, isn't, no, meetings on the twelfth?
Yeah.
Twelfth.
Okay, good.
And uh, what was the next available meeting after the twelfth, just out of curiosity?
Uh, it would jump to February twenty-sixth and it would be another Zoom meeting.
Okay. So, we're not comfortable with that, Dave?
You're muted, Dave.
You're still muted, dude.
Sorry, yeah, now that I'm, I'm looking at the calendar, that would literally give us two weeks from today to get everything submitted, Tim.
Yeah.
That, that's, that is real, real tight.
Yeah, and I'm on vacation that week just to be.
Okay.
So the twenty-sixth then, should we hit for that?
Yeah, yeah, we should push out to the twenty-sixth, um, and I would like to extend a, an invitation to everybody on the board if they want to see Orleans, um, I'm more than happy to walk anyone through at any time. So.
Cool, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we.
I have a question about the basement again, uh, I think that should be included in any security plan.
Uh, I, I mean, again, the security plan's going to be up to the chief, we're just looking for the letter from the chief saying that the security plan is approved, but if he wants that basement secured, then he can have the plan that that basement's locked and secured or whatever.
Or, you know, alarmed or whatever, okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue appeal number twenty-two-four dash zero-five-zero to February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, I need a second.
Oh, a second, I can, well.
Roll call vote on the continuance, um, and just to note, members have been assigned and public comment is still open on this item, her vote and seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor and I, I just want to let these guys know that I truly appreciate their time and effort here, so, I'm, I'm good.
And I am also in favor and I appreciate it too, feel free to send questions through Anna if there's like things between now and then that you want clarity, you know, I think between Anna, we can try to circle back to make sure we get all the parts together.
Okay, thank you everyone for your time, I appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Another item for tonight, appeal number twenty-two-four dash zero-five-one, Timothy Dimek and Carol Bosco-Dimek, trustees of the Timothy J. Dimek Trust and Carol A. Bosco-Dimek Trust have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty-nine-two B, non-conforming buildings or structures used as single and two-family residences and two forty-one-twenty-five C two, special permit provisions. The applicants propose to alter and expand a single-family dwelling by adding front and rear one-story additions along with an exterior ramp and platform, the proposal would increase the first floor living area by three-hundred-and-twenty square feet and the second floor living area by a hundred square feet. Additions will be no more non-conforming as to setbacks, the subject property is located at one-oh-nine West Bay Road, Austro-Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map one-one-six is parcel zero-three-one, it's located in the residency RC zoning district. Um, so again, sitting on this will be our regular members, um, Paul, this is the one you want to sit out? Oh, he left, Paul's sitting this one out, uh, so our regular members, Herb, Paul, no, not Paul, um, Mark, Aaron. And let's see, Natalie, I think you sat last time. Manny, I don't think you've sat any for a little while, Manny, you want to sit on this?
Great.
All right. Attorney Rose, I believe this is you.
This is me, uh, for the record, Arian Rose from.
For the last call, sorry to keep you.
Sometimes we hit it, so it's, it's all good, um, hope to make this brief, um. We are here in a similar case where we are asking for a special permit um for an alteration and expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Um, if we could pop up the site plan briefly, it's important to see the site plan here because this is a long and narrow lot, in fact, it's so narrow, um, it's forty-one feet plus a little change. Um, so I do want you to see that because it did um limit what we, what the owners could do here and um helped um focus their design. I'll try to go through this briefly, um, if, it's, it's interesting with the forty-one square feet um and the front setback of twenty feet and the rear setback of ten, um, you know, to be conforming, this were a new lot, not buildable. It would be, you know, eleven-foot wide. Um, you know, to be conforming, this were a new lot, not buildable, it would be, you know, an eleven foot wide building, so it's really a bowling alley. Um, what's proposed is. On the, it's it's on a corner lot, there's West Bay and First Ave. Um, it's a combined existing and proposed condition site plan. On the front side on um by First Avenue but facing West Bay Road, there's an addition there that's hatched. Um, and then on the rear side, um, there is. An addition off the rear of the, which would be getting my, um, off the south side of of the house. Um, you can see and. It's not clear here, um, but you can see on the right hand side, that is the place where existing structure is nonconforming. It's supposed to be in that second setback, twenty feet away from First Ave, it's four point two feet. So it's quite close. But we are not expanding any further into that. Um, that is not being done, and we are not expanding every other setback is conforming, and we are not creating any new nonconformities. If y'all could look, um, if you could pull up the elevations, Anna, and quickly go through those. Thank you so much. Uh, so this is a rendering on the front. Uh, the top is the existing and the bottom is as proposed. And this is from um sort of the rear of the building on First Avenue. That's the view. On the side, so you can see where that walkway is, that's the front, it's a three season porch, that's new. And on the rear, you can see that there's a dormer on the second floor. Uh, that makes um their two bedrooms for their two daughters on the second floor, it makes the bathroom a bit bigger, and it gives them. Um, a a bigger closet, which is important, and um we can skip to the next page. Or. Actually, we'll skip a bit. If we can go to. A one. Just if we can skip past that, that's the same site plan again. Yep, that's perfect. A one, this is the existing foundation of first floor plan. Um, you can see on the. On the top part of this, that's where the addition is on the first floor, um. And that's the pantry and mudroom, and on the bottom part of this, the sunroom and entry. Um, those are the two areas where um there is an addition. On A one two, that's the second floor. That's the existing floor plan. Oh, I'm sorry, I I misspoke. I was talking that those last four plans were existing. I'm kind of going a bit too fast. So on A one three, you can see the proposed first floor plan. There's. A larger mudroom, a laundry room, a pantry, a hall, and a covered deck off. The top part of this, and then there's a. Proposed um three season sunroom and a walk-in closet. Facing um West Bay. And then A one four shows that closet I was talking about in the larger bathroom. And the last thing I'd just like. Sorry. If we want to go to A two point two. That's showing the existing left elevation and the proposed left elevation. So that's that's the elevation where you can really see the impact of the additions. And this is be, this would be looking from First Avenue. Uh, the next A two three. Shows um the proposed rear elevation and the big um. The most meaningful thing they are trying to do here is add a little bit of space to a tiny house and then make sure that it's more accessible. And so um, you know, as as people, as the the couple ages in place. And so there's a ramp here and originally, and the staircase coming straight. And in keeping with that side setback, not going further into that side setback. Um, go to A two point four, if you would. This is showing. The rear side, the side next to the abutter also on West Bay. And it's not going any further into the setback than the existing house, and that setback is conforming. Finally, I'd just like to show you some pictures quickly to show you what's in the neighborhood. That would be the exhibits of photos. So this is the house. If you haven't been by it, this is the house I'm facing from, taking the picture from West Bay. So on the left hand side is First Ave. Um, so it's set back on that long narrow lot. We skip to the next picture. This um is a picture of that twelve, roughly twelve foot setback on the right hand side of the house with the neighbor. We can scoot to the next one. Thank you. And this shows, this is from the rear of the house, showing that same neighbor. Um, that's a recent renovation, and so you can see um. You know, how large that house is in comparison to um the Bosco Timex. We can go to the next one, please. And this one is roughly from the same angle, but showing the side setback that is nonconforming and first half. Again, it won't get any closer there. Go to the next picture. Um, so this is the back of the house. This is the the um house on the right. Um, is on First Ave, so it's it's much larger, and the house next door, you can see it, the one fifteen West Bay. And Locust. One oh three West Bay. We can go to the next. That's um. The same. Actually, two doors, two houses down on West Bay. Um, there. Um, other houses here that are comparable or larger in size than what's proposed. We can go to the next. Thank you. And this is across the street. Um, this neighbor has sent in a letter of support for the project. We can go to the next page. And this is just something that's a little bit helpful to see the footprints, so you can see Locust, and then you can see the other uh footprints of the houses nearby. Um, the house immediately to the south of Locust on First Ave, they've also written a letter in support. We're unaware of any um opposition to this project thus far. So that those are all of my um exhibits. So we're asking for a special permit. Um, under two forty ninety two B. Um, we believe it's should be allowed for the following reasons. It falls squarely in the category for which a special permit is allowed. The project is a renovation expansion of preexisting nonconforming dwelling that doesn't increase existing nonconformities or create new ones. Um, the gross floor area that's proposed is about four hundred and thirty nine square feet. A really a modest increase here. The proposed alteration expansion are not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, the environment, community, or historic character of the neighborhood. Um, the proposed work takes care to focus the expansion on where we believe will least impact neighbors. That front sun por- sun porch area. And um the side setback facing First Ave. Um, in comparison, as I've mentioned, to the immediate abutters, the proposed project is modest in scale. And the resulting expansion will remain well undersized compared to dwellings immediately abutting and facing the property. The design's limited to the space and accessibility needs of the applicants. Um, we don't believe there'll be any negative environmental impacts. There's no increase in the number of bedrooms proposed, if they're existing, pre-proposed. Uh, the height of the proposed structure will remain conforming and only minimally increasing. The applicants are unaware of, as I've said, of any other neighborhood concern, and confirm that at least. Two possibly three of their abutters have written to the board in favor of the project. For these reasons and those below, um, we believe the proposal's not detrimental to, sorry, skip that, um. For the reasons given. The a site plan is not required because this is a residential project. Um, site plan review, and for the reasons given in paragraph two above. The project as proposed will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the existing dwelling. Thank you very much. We had to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Rose. Any board members have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will open for public comment. We did receive one letter, I believe. Uh, so we can pull it up here, um, from Steve Pica at twenty five First Avenue. Um, they are direct next door, a butter to one oh nine uh West Bay, and they were in support of the project. Is there anyone else here to speak to it? All right, I will make a motion to close. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Uh. Miss Li, Cobalai?
Sure.
So we're we're in uh worthy of butter at one one three West Bay Road. And actually, this is the first time we've actually heard about a construction project going on. Um, I'm trying to find out what's our. What the roof elevation is, the new roof elevation is going to be?
Sure.
Attorney Rose, do you have that?
I do have that. Um. The existing roof of elevation is sixteen point nine and the proposed is seventeen feet, one eighth, one eighth of an inch.
Okay. And how does how does the um? How does the notices typically go out initially? For construction projects, usually abutters are, at least in in other areas, I know that typically. Notices are go- are sent out directly to uh direct abutters directly.
Right, that's the process that should have had that.
Yeah, and we had never received.
I'm surprised by that. Um, we receive a certified abutters list at from. The assessors and IT. And so of the assessors, that information is where the um tax bill goes. So so the abutter notices got sent out according to a certified abutters list.
So the only notice that I that I receive regarding as an abutter is this for this zoning hearing. That's the only one I've I've heard of so far. Is there not typically one that goes out for? Just general projects?
Uh, only if it needs um zoning board of appeals approval, and that's why you received this notice.
Okay.
Yep, if it was a by right project, you wouldn't have gotten any notification if it was just a by right construction project. Is there anyone else here to speak to this um item? Before we close public comment? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close public comment. I need a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, her bone seek.
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
And Manny Alves.
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. So public comments closed, that brings it back to the board for deliberation before we close the public hearing. Does anyone have anything else they want to say, ask?
They've really gone out of their way to try to keep it. Somewhat conforming. I mean, obviously, it's nonconforming, but that that's a very tight lot.
Yes.
Um, architecturally, they seem to have kept it together. You know? They they're not really, I mean, they're barely pushing this thing. It's small, 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 and. And I think they did a pretty pretty decent job.
No, I I agree. I think that's why that's why we have this special permit provision for projects like this.
Yep.
Um, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. And no more testimony can be made after that. Any second?
Second.
Roll call vote in closing the public hearing, her bone and seek.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Would someone like to make findings on this one?
I can give it a go.
All right, go for it.
With regard to staff permit January, uh, sorry, uh, special permit number two zero two four dash zero five one. Dimek and Bosco Dimek Trust and two forty ninety two B, noncon- uh, nonconforming structures used as a single and two family residence. Um. For all special permits, board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty dash one twenty five C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant staff and members of the public. After weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the following required findings. That one, number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted, new ordinance for a grant of special permit. Uh, we find that um section two forty ninety four B allows for a special permit, as we've discussed. Number two, after an evaluation of all the evidence is presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent. A substantial detriment to the public good where the neighborhood affected. We have also been shown um that there were, uh, there was no um. No testimony against this petition. Uh, it is a a minimal, uh, a minimal increase in um. In floor area and uh maintains the architecture, uh. Uh, maintains the architecture of the current uh home and area um surrounding it. Number three, a site plan has been reviewed and found approval in accordance with Article nine here and subject only to the issuance of a special permit. I find the site plan review is not required for single family dwellings. Further, section two forty ninety two B requires the board to find that the proposed alteration or expansion would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing building or structure, and um as as proposed by counsel, um, they have shown that this would not be the case. Uh, this would be the case. It was not um more substantially or um detrimental to the neighborhood. Those are my findings. Sorry about this.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Um, based on Mark's findings to approve, appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero five one, do I have a second? And a roll call vote in approving, uh, her bone seek.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, Mark, do you have some conditions?
I do. Referencing staff report dated January ninth, twenty twenty five. I show um suggested conditions number one through five. And have those uh been reviewed by you, and are those um, are those uh good for your client?
Yes, we review those, and those are where those are acceptable.
Thank you.
All right, so roll uh roll call vote on the conditions for appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero five one, her bone seek.
Favor.
Paul Pennard. Oh, sorry, never mind. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Attorney Rose, um, you have appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero five one granted for your special permit.
Thank you very much. I'll have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
No worries.
All right. Moving along, correspondence. All right, here we go. Um, I'm not sure what date this exactly was, but um we got a planning board zoning amendment for the cannabis overlay district scheduled. Um, it's scheduled for a meeting Monday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at seven PM. Um, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, we heard from Chase Brook Park, um, the Cape Cod Commission pro forma hearing. Which was one thirteen twenty twenty five at ten AM. On one seventeen twenty five, we heard of from um. Barlow's Landing from the Cape Cod Commission pro forma hearing. That was uh one seventeen twenty five at ten AM. And on one seventeen twenty five, we heard from the Cape Cod Commission about the next grid born pro forma hearing. That was one seventeen twenty five at ten thirty AM. And. We heard from on one fourteen twenty twenty five, we heard from Cape Cod Commission. The revised pro forma hearing for the Wilkins Housing Phase Two meeting, that was one fourteen twenty. the revised pro forma hearing for the Wilkins Housing Phase Two meeting. That was one fourteen twenty-twenty-five at five PM. Um, on one twenty-seven twenty-twenty-five, Wilkins Phase Two Cape Cod Commission hearing is continued to five PM and the Chase Brook Park Cape Cod Commission exemption hearing, uh, is one thirty twenty-twenty-five at three PM. And the Straightway and Hyannis Port Cape Cod Commission Water Treatment Facility exemption is one thirty twenty-twenty-five at three PM. Any matters not in reasonably anticipated ahead of time? Anyone? No one? We're all good? Um, upcoming meetings, February twelfth in person, February twenty-sixth remote, March twelfth in person. And anything we need to know about any of those? Are we busy or?
We have three items on the twelfth and now one item on the twenty-sixth so far.
Okay. All right, unless anyone has anything else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a second. All right, roll call vote, her vote and seek.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Uh, Manny Alves.
Aye, in favor.
Natalie Pittenger.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so we are adjourned.